No take that.
As we are live.
Would you like to order the November sixth, twenty twenty five Columbia Borough Council Workshop? Could I have a little call call please?
Councilperson thing?
Here.
Here. Here.
Here.
Here.
Here. Here.
Would anybody care to offer an invocation? If you'd like, please rise for a moment of silence. Councilperson Keyzie, would you like to leave us a pledge?
Sure. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the great public for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Announcement of executive information session, there was none. Are there any additions, deletions, or reorganization needed? Could I have a motion to approve the agenda as published?
Second.
A motion by Councilperson Kaufman, second by Councilperson Keyzie. Approve the agenda as published, all in favor.
Aye.
And one opposed. All right, citizen comment, non-agenda items only, the first sign up we have is Frank Duff.
Good evening.
Evening.
Sharon Littner would have liked to have been here, but her dad passed away two days ago. Her mom, she's kind of in bad shape, so Sharon spends a lot of time with her. They were both in their nineties. I just told her I mentioned her. A question I got, the new hires, the one for the market house and the one for the highway, they're in the budget, will they both stay close in twenty six? Or will they be hired before that?
I'm twenty six. Twenty six?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
All right, is there anyone that wanted to speak that didn't get a chance to sign up? No, all right, Mayor Lutz. All right, Chief Broomer.
Thank you.
All right, workshop items, first one we have is Rick Brenneman, the discussion on McGinnis. So Rick, I believe the, the reason we wanted to hear from you is there is concerns about the sealed bid process and, you know, how we would put put restrictions around that and how that, how that would work in terms of, you know, drawbacks of having it go fast versus slow, you know, that whole, how we navigate that.
So, thank you, Chair Heather, if I may call you Heather.
Yeah, go ahead.
And glad to be here for the rest of Borough Council. Certainly, I work with Heather and Jack, speak with them on a regular basis, and Derek Rivaldo. And first thing I'd just like to say, I've been involved in this McGinnis project, I think, since two thousand twenty one-ish, I think, at least when I go by my job files, I always number them by year. And McGinnis is started in two thousand twenty one. And really, my background is site civil, that's all I've done my entire life, generally, I mean, for the last almost forty years. That's what I've, the industry that I've worked in, working in the field, running the heavy equipment, managing jobs. I've worked my way up over the years. And in the last fifteen years, I primarily worked as a consultant to both developers, engineers, and project owners, and in this case, such as Columbia Borough, they are the project owners, whereas I represent their interests. So my background, I guess why it was important for me to say that, was that I'm not a developer myself. I work with developers, and I can tell you what the mindset of most developers is, at least the ones locally. As I understand it, working with John B. Miller from the EDC, that there's a desire that once, at some point in the very near future, that Columbia Borough would in fact like to sell this particular McGinnis parcel and get out from under, not play developer, certainly understand that. I am a board member on a local county or municipal board in another part of the county, and certainly I can understand as a, as a fellow Board of Supervisor, which is the same as most of you sitting on council, I can understand what it is that you're trying to balance. You're here on an off night, I guess, to, to talk about budget, we're all in budget season right now, trying to get ourselves in fiscal shape for two thousand twenty six. So, so I understand that. But in speaking with John B. Miller and really what the next steps are from the McGinnis parcel, you know, I understand that the borough would like to sell, totally understand that. The thing that I'm going to tell you I'm struggling with, and I'm going to speak on behalf of the developer, a developer, any developer, if you will, is developers don't, despite popular and public opinion, most developers locally aren't rolling in it, okay? I think the public opinion is, is developers are rich, and they got all kinds of money, and they're going to do whatever. That's not quite true. Do they make decent money at what they do? Sure, but the problem is, is they're invested in that property or whatever it is that they do for a very long time, and there's a lot of upfront costs that they have to put into a project long before they ever see a return on that investment. The engineering cost, the cost for permitting, you know, and, and the permitting today has gotten exponentially worse in the last fifteen years by comparison to what it was prior to that. Because not only do you have all the municipal hurdles to jump through, but now you have state and federal hurdles, depending on your project, that you have to jump through, all of which take time. And when those things take time, that equates to money, okay? And, and that's the way that it goes. So what EDC has kind of laid out for you folks is, is a schedule. And I look at it, again, I'm not a developer, I'm not a professional, you could have called somebody from the street and probably got a different opinion from them. I'll give you my opinion based upon my working relationships with developers. What I saw in that schedule was that you're going to give them a period of time for which, I'll call it a due diligence period. And normally, in the development industry, that due diligence period is where they're coming up with conceptual designs, they're developing a budget for all their costs that are going to go into getting that project built, and then they're going to look at what the return on investment is going to be. Many times in the due diligence period, that may take, if, if you don't know what you're building, that may take you two, three years. I can tell you that from my experience working with developers, I was intricately involved in the Belmont Shopping Center, me and I am township at Fruitville Pike, that took almost eight years to go from, you know, kind of a brain, hey, I think this would be a great idea, to the day we started moving dirt with bulldozers, was all but eight years. And there was a lot that went into that. Most developments in the commercial world, a developer will want you to keep your money in the project and not pay anything for it till at least he gets through land development. So when John B. Miller, when I see that schedule that kind of lays out that, hey, you know, next sixty, ninety days, we're going to put things out to bid, and that's all well and good, but if the developers are probably going to come back, unless they have tenants that they know want to be there, are probably going to really buck at this timeline that I think, from what I saw, was you want to see something being built in twelve months. That, the permitting alone is going to take twelve months, once you know what it, what it is that you're going to do on the state level. You know, and then if there's, depending on their use, I don't know how it's zoned, you know, is there, depending on the use, do you come through a conditional use with your, you know, with this council? Or does it need, you know, special zoning approval depending upon the ultimate use? So there's a lot of hurdles that are gonna, that, that it's going to take some time for a developer to want to, you know, say, I am interested in that. And, and quite honestly, there has to be a demand. There has to be a demand for what it is that land is zoned for. I don't know the particulars of your zoning and what that currently is. You know, if it's like commercial light industrial, you know, there is a somewhat of a demand within the county. Now, I would say that demand is more in, you know, Paradise Gordonville and that kind of thing, where in the Amish sector, you know, they're outgrowing the family farms. Farming is no longer profitable like it used to be. And quite honestly, the Amish have fifteen kids, and there's only so many farms, so they have to kind of diverse themselves, you know, from an economical perspective, to where they're building little wood shops and leather shops and all that kind of thing. Without only, they can only grow so much on the family farm before they have to start looking at other property. And so in that area, you know, the ten, fifteen thousand square foot buildings that are light manufacturing and sales and that kind of thing, there was a demand for that for, for a number of years. Now that demand is starting to get filled. Does that demand exist in Columbia Borough? I, I can't answer that, that's not my area of expertise. I think, just speaking of it from a, just from a very, from a common sense perspective, the McGinnis parcel does not lend itself very well to a business that's going to be, require a lot of truck traffic, because how do you get there? You don't get there without driving through residential areas. Now, could you come up off of four forty one on Plain Street? Sure, but it's a, it's a single lane underpass under the railroad there. Is that constrictive? You know, to the guy that needs one truck a day, no, probably not, that probably doesn't make much difference. But if he needs ten trucks a day, that could become problematic and would be, become less appealing. So I think for the borough, I think, you know, I don't think there's any harm in, in looking at what that schedule is. But just know that if there's developers out there that have interest in this parcel, they probably are going to want to negotiate with you the time by which things will happen. And I do, I will say that I do think that anything inside of two years from the time a developer says, I'm willing to sign a sales agreement, which just basically means, I'm willing to buy this in a period, over a period of time or within a period of time, he's going to want to make sure that he can actually do what it is that he's going to do, because he's not going to make any money on this until he can either lease something or sell something. Otherwise, he's carrying the cost until that time. I heard rumor that maybe there was some consideration about public sale. You could try that market too, but put a reserve on the land, don't let it, don't say, wow, you know, if we get, you know, five hundred thousand dollars, we're willing to let it go, put a reserve on it. There's no harm in doing it, the reserve isn't met, you don't sell it, it's that simple. I don't know what else you would like me to say, but that's my spiel. And if there's any questions, because I threw a lot out there, I, you know.
Here's a question. You, you just, your last statement, okay? Say in borough was, okay. We're going to put it up for public sale, we're going to put a reserve on it. Now, that's going to take a period of time. So that's, that's going to take away that period of time that EDC is talking about.
Yeah, that's, it's an independent process, in my opinion, like that, like you're, you're, when you go down that road, Mayor, I think what that's saying is, you want to test that water out first, and if that doesn't work, then you're going to, then you're going to go to EDC, because I don't think you can do both.
No, what I'm saying is, if you spend the time to go that way, and no one meets the reserve, you wasted that period of time.
Correct.
So now, instead of saying two years, you might be looking at two and a half years.
Not only that, but it, you know, I know, I don't know all the details that the borough has relative to the sale, but I can tell you that what's going to happen in the public, in, in a public auction, most of the time, especially in Miami, guys that are going to come to a public auction are looking for a steal. And they're not going to be interested in you putting conditions on it that say, well, if you buy this, you got to build it. Now, you know what, I'm not interested, I won't go away from it, I'm not interested in that. And that's going to be, you're going to have to, if you're going to, you're going to give a whole lot up that I don't think you want to give up. But maybe you do, that's not, that's not my real.
Someone could buy that at a public sale and sit on it.
Yeah, I, I mean, because they're, they don't, if they're going to buy it, again, unless there's, unless there's a demand in the marketplace to build light industrial commercial, somebody's not going to buy that speculatively and pay you top dollar for it, because they're taking a risk. And when they're taking the risk, that's where the dollars come into play with this, is when they're taking the risk. And they're going to say, well, listen, I can, I'll agree to buy it, and I'll buy it for seventy five thousand dollars an acre, but I can't, I can't commit to two years on this, I can't, because I don't know, I don't have a buyer right now for it. And it's going to take me a year to get through just the planning process and permitting. So, you know, I mean, what, what John B. Miller put out there, I think, there's, there's two avenues by which you, you can do this. You can go down the road of public sale and advertise and see if there's, see if there's any interest. But my guess is that the interest you're going to see, you're not going to be happy with the return. And if you go down the road of what John B. Miller says, I think, just be prepared that one of the negotiating points on this is going to be, or a couple of negotiating points is the time by which they have to build and when they pay you the money. That's what's going to come into play, because they're going to want you to hold the money in it so they know they can do what it is they want to do, and that they have a buyer for what it is they want to do. They're not, they can't afford to carry it for five years, ten years, and not know, they just can't. No developer buys land, most developers, I should say, no, most developers today don't buy land and sit on it, they just don't. Especially this parcel, because this parcel, what you did when you, when you changed your zoning, is you've, you've taken a parcel of land that at one time was appealing to a group of people this large. And when you said, well, we don't want any housing, we don't want the impacts of what housing does, maybe to the school district, whatever that it may be, and now you said, no housing, it's got to be commercial, that'd be commercial industrial. It's now went from this size group of developers to a group of developers that are this big. So that's what, that's what this does. Now, I'm not trying to paint a doomsday picture for you, which it sounds like that's what I'm doing. But this is a tricky thing to navigate, no doubt, for you guys, to try to maximize your investment. I mean, I will say, tell you from a fellow municipal elected official, that I applaud the borough of Columbia for taking the bull by the horns and looking at a parcel and saying, listen, what can we do to better our town, better our community? And I think everything that's been done to date from, from where I stand, it's a positive, because you've taken direction, and there's a lot that a lot of municipalities in Lancaster County could learn from that. But I also get that, hey, listen, you folks aren't developers, and you don't want to be developers, and you probably shouldn't be developers. But I do applaud you for what you did, because I think it's, I think it's, it's an out of the box thinking that's, you're trying to fix a problem that works best for you, and you know what works best for you, because this is where you live. So this is, I mean, I know some people in this council may or may not be in favor of this, I don't know where you stand, it doesn't really matter to me. But I would just say that, you know, to date, I, I don't think Columbia Borough to date has made a wrong move on this, I don't.
Let me ask you this, which gave you a tear, we had a, a commercial realtor in Asia. What are your thoughts if the borough changed, I'll say, the path and looked at over fifty five housing?
Yeah, I, I, again, I think when you do that, when you, when you go down that road, I think if you looked at this from a zoning perspective, that would say, it's some commercial light industrial, but through a text amendment or possibly, you know, an overlay district or something that would allow for that. I mean, the benefit in the fifty five and older communities is that you don't put a burden on the school system, okay? Most, unless grandparents or the parents of children, which is pretty rare. That's not a, that's not a bad idea, because again, instead of just looking at this group of people this large, they, it opens it up a little bit, and maybe makes it a little bit more appealing. And I, I had this conversation, I think, with, with Jack at one point. Does Columbia School District put together a, a forecast of enrollment to the future, do you know?
I believe so.
So if, if they do, I would, I would recommend that the council or, or management here, see if you can get a copy of that, because I can tell you that in the school district that I live, Lampeter Strasburg, we have a township that's still growing, and our enrollment in Lampeter Strasburg schools over the next ten years is on a downward trend. I mean, and it's a strong downward trend. I mean, it's, and, and what's that, the reason for that is, is that the number of people per household is going down, it's not going up. I mean, the days of there being a, you know, a mom and dad and three kids, it's not that anymore, it's a mom and dad and maybe one kid, or a mom, or a dad, or, or, you know, whatever, but the, the household size has actually shrunk it. So that has affected, has affected our schools from an enrollment perspective. And while you guys are thinking about, you know, the McGinnis parcel, that would be good information, because are you steering away from the idea of it not being maybe some light residential use, because you're fearful the Columbia Borough School District can handle it? But the reality is, in ten years, Columbia Borough School District may be down twenty percent from where they are right now. If that's what's in their projection, then I, I think it's good information to note. Maybe it's useless, maybe it's not.
I think one of the concerns with the, with that something that's like a fifty five and over or something like that is the fear that it would become nonprofit and non-taxable.
Well, that would depend on your sale.
You could, you, some of those kinds of things, I think, you're, so you can't address everything right now on the front side, because you don't know what's coming at you. So don't, don't spend a lot of time worrying about what you don't know. I think, once you get that kind of person in here, and I think to the mayor's point, that becomes something that you incorporate in the agreement of sale, and possibly even as a restriction on the deed that you transfer over, that, that would, that would say that. Because the boroughs made this investment, because with the hope that that's going to generate additional property tax. So you selling it to a nonprofit, you just shot yourself in the foot.
Right, that's why we took out the institutional uses, because we don't want, you know, we didn't want that.
Well, and I think of an institution, though, here's what I would say, if an institution showed some interest in that, then I think that's part of the conversation, is to say, you know, we're not interested in, you know, being, you not generating any property tax, we're doing, and, and if that is a must have, then we're not interested in talking to you.
Yeah, I mean, I ju, I know from talking with Evan before, you can't put a deed restriction to say that it can't be non-tax exempt.
Really?
That's what.
But you can, you can put a deed restriction and say it would be fifty five and over.
Well, right, I know, but, I mean, the concern is, the, the concern is nonprofit status. Yep.
Um, I mean, no, I would say that we are on the, we are on the schedule that we originally thought we would be, right now, I can tell you, as I've got to say before the meeting, a few folks, actually Mayor, Mayor Lutz, all the earth, and I hope, I'm trying to say, figure out how to say this. Everything behind the Columbia Firehouse, all that earth directly behind them has been remediated, tops of the place, and actually, grass has been planted on some night, grass is growing. The piece of the runway that's directly behind Mr. Steiner's house, that end of the runway as of this week has been laid down to the grade that we're required to lay it to. By the end of this week, the remaining, what I'll call the east end of the runway toward, I guess that's, that's Thirteenth Street on that end, on the east side, that end, they're going to start laying that back, and that should take, and I'm going to base this on, so please don't hold me to the date, but based on what they're moving from a productivity perspective, I am projecting that down is going to take about twelve days. So I suspect that, you know, right be, right around the beginning, or the, right before Thanksgiving, I can't make you a promise that they're one hundred percent done, but what I can tell you, barring that we don't get a snowstorm or a rainstorm or some crazy weather, we would appear to be on track to have the majority of the bulk of all the earth moved by Thanksgiving, that, and we're still on that trajectory. And if you go out there and you look, I mean, what we, one thing that we, we have done is, and this was done, we're doing this because we want, at the end of the day, we want this parcel to be appealing to a developer for a lot of reasons. One, how does it look, does it look good? You know, the box, you can put a check mark in there, yep, looks good, that, okay, we achieved that. Do they get a sense of where our minds were as a borough, as a planning group, that said, this is how we envisioned a street layout?
Street layout.
Kind of think that it would make some sense, we're frankling, we'll extend up, and that's not to say they have to do it there. I mean, they come in and they say, hey, listen, I want to build two hundred thousand square foot firehouse here, and that just doesn't work, combined, it doesn't work. But visually, to the public and everyone else who drive out there, hey, well, I can just kind of see how this is going to work. And pictures and visualizations are what appeal to people, and it's what ultimately helps you sell them. If it looks like crap, they ain't going to buy it. Yes.
How are we dealing with, I know the dirt is being listed and moved around, there seems like a lot of extra dirt, debris out there.
So, the something dirt that you see in pile is not in piles per se, because it's extra. It's just the way that the contractor has chose to move it. And in some cases, you know, there's some rocks, there's maybe some treatments, they'll put it in a pile, and they sort through it, and then when they look back, they'll get out back in. So while to the average person, it may look, oh my gosh, this looks like, I get it, like, I'm not even going to say that it doesn't, that's, that's true. But that, when we're all done with, when we were done there, the intent and what we're expecting to be, is there's not going to be any, and we're, we're not expecting it right now, as I'm speaking today, we're not expecting whether there'd be any dirt possible there. So concrete, we will probably crush that, because that's the plan. Probably left behind and spread out, so. Because there's, I mean, I will tell you this, there is value. I mean, I know that the borough's not moving forward with maybe developing the project as of this time, but to a developer that would come in there, look at it and say, oh my gosh, there's two thousand tons of crushed concrete here, hey, that's going to be beneficial for me in my construction, but there's not a downside to that. Oh my goodness, yes. What you, are you familiar with the project? Okay. You know what it looks like behind the Columbia Firehouse right now?
Rick, her, her yard is the one we had to put the filter cap.
Where we did the walls?
Yes.
Okay, now I understand.
Okay.
So if you look, like, down there behind where the firehouse is, that's what I expect, generally speaking. Now, behind your home, there's a, there's a slope that comes your way, and at the bottom of that slope, there, there is a swale that catches the water and takes it out toward Thirteenth Street, and down it around, and dumps it out into the woods. So any water problem that you may have had previously, what this plan, as it was designed, does, is probably reduces any, should reduce any water that you get, should. I will say this, when you look at it from, you're looking at it in plan, you're looking at the plan, and you're saying, well, how did the water run before? And what was the area that drained that way to you before? What's happening now, when it's done, will be less, because everything from the top of the slope that's behind your house south, will, the rainwater won't go south.
That's not where the water comes from.
Where does it come from? Where does it come from? Moving west. Where the pile is down. And and what I will tell you is, I will look at that, and maybe someday when I'm out there, if I can get with you, if there's something that we can do pretty easily that keeps that from happening, ultimately, that's what we will. Well, I saw that, I I saw that, you know, where the water runs down across that driveway right into your garage where I sold the sand guys there. No, your problem, I understand. I can tell you, looking at the grading, because they did do some changing of grades and things in that area. Generally speaking, that area is kind of flat where the water doesn't really know where it wants to run. And I would see that in a, you know, a three or four inch rainfall where the water doesn't know where to run, it's probably going here, there, and everywhere. Then you get it. Yeah, so anyway, I, yes, I will, we will, we will look at that. Well, you've got neighbors below you. Yeah, understood, understood. And that'll be a conversation I want to have with Derek, because when you go east of your property line, it separates between you and your neighbor. Some of the bank where your neighbors is is actually not on borough property, it's actually his property. But that's a part of what, like, I will say this, that from a construction perspective, you never go across the the boundaries of your property that you're working on. And if that's a concern for your neighbor, then we need to have a conversation with him. Well, but if none of his gets moved, that's that's the, not this one, behind it, yeah. Well, it shouldn't get worse because you're taking load off of it, but I hear, I hear you.
Does anyone have any questions for Rick?
I have a question related to a sealed bid. In terms of stipulations that we put on, whether it's construction timeline or due diligence, what's the, I mean, my my biggest concern is that if it's ratcheted down too tight, that we, like you were saying, make that group of buyers too small. So how, you know, how should we go about doing that in the smartest way?
I think the structure on the front side, if you're going to ask for bids, I think you need to let, be willing to let it be a little loose. And I think once you get the bids, I think it's part of your conversation with the bidders, when you open the bids, you have to be willing to be a little bit flexible in their timeline. Because as they said, you know, I don't know what you're looking to get out of this parcel. You know, is it a million dollars, is it $2 million, is it $5 million? I don't know. But I can tell you the developer's not going to buy it, give you $5 million, $2 million for that piece of land and not know that when he's going to get a return on that investment. He's not going to, and if if he's got to carry it for any period of time, the price is going to go down. The longer he's got to carry it, the the cost, the more the price is going to go down. Because he just doesn't know. Now, if you get lucky and you talk to a developer and says, hey, listen, I got 15 guys that are looking for buildings. This is going to work out great, I'm going to make a lane, I'm going to make a fortune. That's where everybody wins, but I I don't think that's going to be the case. You just don't. Anyway, I'm a dirt guy, I I'm not a real estate guy, I'm just giving you an opinion.
Rick, I I have a question for you. You said the difference between us having the auction ourselves and and going through the EDC's route. And you think the EDC route is probably better?
I'm not, no, I'm not going to say that it's better. I I'm just saying that when you do an auction.
Well, that that's that's not really my point. My point is, I'm not sure we all even heard EDC route.
Okay.
So.
Well, I would rather not be the one to share what that route is, because I may screw it up, because again, I don't live in that world necessarily.
Right.
And that that's information that needs to come from someone on your team as far as what that, what that, you know, looks like. I mean, I've gone as far, I'll be honest with you, knowing that the borough has wanted to sell this, I've called some commercial real estate brokers, if you will, broker real estate, say, you know, many, just anybody looking for property in the Columbia area. I don't know, I'm not, you know, I don't know of anybody, but that's not to say that they're not out there. Right now, I just don't have anybody looking for land anywhere. It's not to say that they're not there, just he doesn't know it. So. Yeah, I just feel like, you know, in the public auction world of commercial real estate, most of those guys are looking for property for a song, and if you're going to be disappointed with your time.
So I'm still, I'm still confused a little bit, because you say in the public auction, by law, we have to sell by public auction.
Yeah, or sealed bid.
It's still an auction, it's still a public auction.
Yeah, but he means what we did out of Blue Lane, where you have the auctioneer there and.
I think the difference between the public auction and meetings, maybe I'm, maybe.
That's, that's.
Maybe this I can say. If you're going down the road of public auction, there was a process that the EDC put together to give, like, benchmarks of time for different things to happen in in.
And that's the sealed bid.
In the sale, okay? When I think of public auction, maybe it's as much my error as it is anyone's. When I think of public auction, I think you're advertising in the newspaper, wherever you advertise, public boroughs accepting bids for, you know, X number of acres. Bids must be submitted by, you know, whatever the date is. And then you're going to put whatever the requirements are that you want as a borough, and that's how you're going to go. If you go down the EDC route, it's going to be similar, but there's going to be periods of time, like a schedule put together that says, okay, notice is published, and then for the time notice is published up until six months from now, the developer has a due diligence period to think about the project, figure out what it is he wants to do with it, and then come back and then make you an offer. And then in that process, he, John D. Miller had built in that once the bids were submitted, the borough council would talk with the, with whoever submitted the bid, and then there would be a period of time after that for them, for an agreement of sale to come together and then automatically resort. But I'm telling you that just from a developer's perspective, most developers are going to want to come back and negotiate with you to say, I can't commit the building in here in one year like you're asking for. I can only commit. And my fear is that if you make it that stringent on the front side, that you make that a requirement, that's going to scare off people that otherwise would give you a bid.
Yeah.
That's what, that's what you got to be, and and I keep, I keep forgetting, to be honest with you, that you're a public entity trying to sell a land, and you're not a private guy trying to sell a land, there's clearly a difference.
Right. I I'm more, and I can't speak for everybody, I I am personally more interested in selling the land than I am developing the land. It's going to get developed, if somebody buys it, it's going to be developed. And we have guidelines set up to develop it.
Right. I think it's the timing is what's going to scare people. When you tell people that you've got to buy in today, and in a year from now, you've got to do it, that's the hard to say.
Yeah, I'm not, I don't, I don't know how we can put restrictions on it like that and be reasonable about it. But again, I want to get it out of borough's hands and put it in somebody else's hands. And even if they sit on it for two or three, four, or five years, right now, we're not getting any tax dollars for it, if it's sold, if it's something. No.
They'll put it in clean and green. You're going to get what you're getting now.
That's fine, but they'll have to make it up at the end. And they take it out, but that's fine. But we're getting nothing right now.
Yeah, but if you if you go through the way EDC suggests, in two years, you may have construction there. You go through the bid, in five years, 10 years, you may, it may still be sitting clean and green.
All right, so, all right, we just won't sell.
Mayor, let's, would it, is it your fear that a developer would buy that and put it in clean and green? Do you think they would spend that kind of money to put, to turn around and put it?
You think you'd hit the right price?
Because the ba- the downside to clean and green is, when you pull it back out, you're paying everything back. I mean, you're paying, everything that you got out of, you got to pay back. Like, you, it don't start claiming from day one.
Assess the value is much lower.
It is now, absolutely. And and when, but, and so that's my point is, i- if I'm a developer, because the minute that he develops it, the cost per, the land cost is going to, the assessed value is going to go through the roof. And he's going to pay, but, but my fear, and I'm not a tax guy either, but my fear in that logic would be that the day that he pulls it out of clean and green, and it's at a higher assessed value, that will be the basis for him paying what was to pull it out of clean and green, so he's paying more. It wouldn't benefit him to put it into clean and green if that was how he wanted to do it. So he couldn't do it for two years. We couldn't do it for, couldn't put it in. There's a, there's a minimum time, so, anyway.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions?
No, I just appreciate the the realistic timelines, you know.
Yes, Frank.
I heard all kind of different proposals on this and different, heard councils, different views on what they wanted to do and everything. If you put it up for public sale and it brings a real low price, that's going to set a precedent to anybody, any developer that wants to buy and say, well, here's all it brought at public sale. I I'm not really crazy about that. But I think you have a valuable piece of property. And I think it's going to bring money if you don't get excited. I heard one time when council member said he don't care how much they lose on profit, but that's not what you bought it for. You bought it to make a profit for the for the taxpayers of this town. And I just think you need to just really think this out. The other thing I think you need to look at is, if it's going to take a couple of years to to get this done through the system, EDC or wherever it is, how much is that costing us a year? I don't think it's costing us much. We're not making money because it's not sold, but but it's, it, I I think you're you're making more of a mistake if you hurry up and sell this. I just think we we need to look at that part of it. Council's original thing on this was to get the mediation done, which is probably going to be done by Thanksgiving, then to put it up for sale, so now you're looking at two options. So this is what we're looking at right now, right? You're looking at either public sale or to EDC. So that's something you're going to have to, you know, dig up a lot of information on. So I'm just, I'm just asking for the public so kind of know where you might be going. You know, it's all going to take time regardless of what you do.
Try to get the votes back for the vote.
Yep.
Thanks for letting me speak.
Anything else while we have Rick here?
And I would just say this to the borough council, I mean, this is a lot to stew, and it's a lot to think through. I don't envy you. But, you know, I've extended, I'll extend myself back to the borough for, you know, even if it's just, hey, informally, I want to pick your brain. I'm willing to do that, because, you know, there's, again, I I applaud the borough, and I think a lot of what you guys are trying to do here, and I, to date, I don't think you've made a wrong move. I'll just say it that way. My my vantage point is I don't think you've made a wrong move in what it is. I mean, I know some of you may not, yep, but that guy's nuts. But that's okay, I've been calling a whole lot worse things up.
I thank you for coming in. I I really do.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Rick.
No problem.
Thank you, Rick.
You're quite welcome. Thank you.
Awesome. All right. All right, now, we're going to continue on our budget review. I know we were in the general fund, but honestly, I can't remember where we were at.
I believe the last discussion we had was around the fireworks.
Fireworks, yeah.
Really?
I'm sorry?
Really, you're going to start there?
Yes.
Yep, that's where we were.
That's where we ended down.
Was that 12? I can't read.
10, that's what we were pulled up in there. All right. Oh, yeah, we're almost done.
Is that number? I think it's page 12, Mayor.
Page 12.
Four fifth, four, five, seven, 200.
Three items after that.
18 there. 18 is where, yeah.
The far, the far left column. The far left column, you'll see, uh, 01.
Versus accountant number, Frank, it'll be on your far left of the page.
Thank you, chief.
So fireworks, um, that's for the Columbia 300. Questions on that?
I think we did talk on it somewhat, yeah, because of like, we're more like partners with Wrightsville.
But this one we're not.
This one we're not.
This, this time, we are not partnering with Wrightsville.
No, we had in advance.
So, yeah, the fireworks, the, um, that is being done without Wrightsville this year, it's just us, because us will be part of the Columbia 300. Questions?
The plan is to use the new Public Works location off Bridge Avenue.
Or set them off.
Set them off, with the viewing at Gladbells.
Yes.
Any concerns on that? All right, and then, excuse me, we have the debt service, the principal, and the interest there.
Yeah, just, yeah, shame on me for not seeing this last year when the mayor sent out an email to us about some questions. It really brought it to me, because, you know, I was on the council back in, I don't know what year we got the initial bond, but that bond was for, to be used for, what we were using it for at that time was capital projects. So I really should have called it there even last year, but unless something changed during the refi in 2021, wondering why we're not carrying the debt service in the capital fund versus the general fund. I mean, was there a reason why it was switched?
So that was switched out a couple of years ago because we were paying it out of capital, but we were not putting any money into capital to be able to make that payment. So there's no money in capital to make that payment. So, I mean, we're either going to put a line item in the general fund budget that's a deposit into the capital so we can pay the debt service and pay the debt service out of capital, or we're just going to pay it right out of the general fund where the money's coming from anyway.
I'm just asking.
Yeah, no, 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 I, because we we had gone through this.
Wasn't there an audit question too about that?
Yes, that they were, we, you know, were, I mean, I get it, you're not supposed to mingle the the capital fund and and the bond was for capital, capital projects, but the capital fund has to get money from somewhere. So the capital fund has to be funded. So the capital fund has to be funded through something. So it's either.
Well, I, I think you, you fleshed it out, Heather. First, I don't know how. Maybe bonds are different, but how you took something from capital and put it into general when you can't take monies from capital and put it into general?
But we're.
You can take money from general and put it into capital.
We, we used the money from the bond on the capital project. It doesn't say where the money for that bond has to come from. The money has to come from somewhere. And so if you don't have the money in the capital fund to pay for that bond, which if we had money in the capital to do the capital projects, we wouldn't have had the bond in the first place. So.
If you keep it, if you put it back in capital, and, and I know you're against this, but I'm not, I'm in favor of this. Cause it's worked for quite a few years around here. If you put it in, if you put it back in capital, and you must take money out of general to pay, you make that budget transfer, you make that, you make that payment.
Right.
Okay? You have lowered your, your general fund amount. Now, if, if, if monies come in from the sale of project, of properties that you have sitting in the queue, then you, then you start picking that up and you don't draw from the general. Now your general is staying a little healthier and you're using that other monies. And if you come into, say, just hypothetically, say you sell one of these properties and say you, you wind up with a million dollars in capital, you may wanna pay two years of, on that capital, which ultimately reduces the, the monthly withdrawal or, and or goes to the back end and reduces the amount of interest you're gonna pay ultimately on that money. So you're saving money by paying down.
You, we can't, we can't pay ahead on the bond until twenty thirty, till twenty thirty.
But it's something you really, I'm not, I think you should really look at it.
No, and I, and I get that.
It really changes your, it really changes your general fund. And if you wind up with monies in capital, you're gonna protect your general fund, but you can't do it the other way.
But it, it doesn't, it doesn't protect, as it is now, we would have to have a line item in if we moved the four ninety and the one thirty-three over to capital. Okay, that's fine. We still have to take that out of the general fund to put over there because we don't have it in the capital to do.
But, but at some point, what I'm saying is at some point in time, you may.
Right. But the other part of this is if you're talking about wanting to, to pay two point two million dollars or one point eight million dollars for a fire truck, we're not gonna have the money in the capital.
Well, you need to.
And we already, we don't have any in there right now to, to do that. So it has to come from the general fund.
I don't wanna jump ahead on this, but truth of the matter is sometimes you need to sit down and see what you got and start prioritizing. And sometimes you may say, sorry, Charlie, you're gonna have to wait till next year. And whether it's, whether it's a public, whether it's a public service building, uh, fire truck or any, anything like that, you may have to say, I'm sorry, we may have to work this out next year, but we got money coming in and we'll be able to do it then. I don't like, I don't like putting burdens in the general fund that should be in the capital fund. And then when they're in capital fund, then you have a choice to whether you do it or you don't do it, or when you do it. I'm a hundred percent, believe me, I'm one hundred percent in favor of buying this fire truck. Don't get me wrong. But I think you, you need to take that two hundred out of general and put it in capital.
Well, it's five.
No. Which one? The capital or the?
Four ninety and one thirty-three.
That's the, that's the bond.
That's the bond. Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, the ones.
So I, I'm just saying, you gotta take a hard look at that. I'm not saying, you know, I'm, I'm not gonna fight you on it. I'm just saying you oughta take a hard look at. I'm, what I'm looking at is what can you do to reduce the amount of burden on your general fund?
I just.
And by moving things to capital and maybe you have to wait a year or whatever, you, you're gonna not hit.
If we do move that to capital, then we have to put a transfer into this budget, into the capital fund to make that payment. That is not in the capital fund to be paid there. And for, I think that is why it was moved out of there because for years it was being paid out of capital and there was no money going into the capital to pay for it. So the capital fund got spent way down.
That's what I'm saying. You should have money coming into capital.
Right. We should. We should have had money coming into capital for the last three years and we haven't yet. So.
And then, and that's another point people need to get off their ass and get through.
Right. So.
Yeah.
Excuse my language, but that's where it is.
I mean, I am going on the, the, I was going on the advice that I was given by previous manager, previous finance manager, and also, um, you know, the people I've talked to at PSAB and everything else that said, unless you're replenishing the capital, you shouldn't be paying for the debt out of there because all you're doing is getting rid of your, your capital money and you're not replacing it.
Cause I had actually gone on like, like the Leguda website and I just did Google searches just to see if it was even legal to do it. And that's why I wouldn't even brought it up unless it said it could be done. Again, based on what the, what the, what the bond monies were spent for, and if it was spent on capital, it, we could do it.
Well, yeah, I know we can.
Maybe we can't do it this year.
No.
Maybe we look at it.
Well, and I said, it, it had been and you can do it that way. But the problem is there's no money going back into capital to make that payment. So you're taking your capital down to negative.
Yeah, I think.
Because the money in, in the, there, the capital fund is depleted.
Right.
If you don't have the money, if you're not gonna put the money and pay for it.
Yeah, I, I get it. I think.
Honestly.
I know where I was coming from, where I think where the mayor was alluding to was maybe instead of just blocking it in to the general every year, and a certain amount, maybe just the, the entire amount, you just look at it and say, okay, in this year's capital fund, we sold X, Y, and Z for, for five hundred thousand dollars. Maybe out of that five hundred thousand, we could put two hundred of it. So you could kinda like fluctuate your.
See, you can't move it, you can't, that's the thing. You can't move capital out into general.
Right.
I know. But, but I'm saying, but you don't, but you don't allocate as much out of, you, you kinda only allocate out of your general to this.
My fear is, my fear is.
It could lead where it's at, but like I said.
What, what had, what has happened in the past is we would say we're paying it out of capital and then we'll, and then in an effort to appear that we've done well on the budget, we don't make that transfer because for whatever reason, we say, oh, oh, we're not gonna do it, we're not, and then we can say to the, to the taxpayers, oh, we did so well on our budget. We were X number, we were X dollars under budget, when in the reality is, it's not real. And that, that has happened. And I don't wanna see that happen again.
Yeah, quite honestly, our properties that we're selling, that money's spent already.
That's what I'm trying to tell you, Gary.
No, but I'm saying.
Maybe you don't wanna spend it on those projects. See, what, what I, where I think the borough went wrong, the borough had, okay, we're gonna sell these properties for this amount of money. We're gonna do these projects and this sale covers this project, this sale covers this project. You spent the money before you even had it. Maybe you need to stop right now, get rid of those properties and then reprioritize these projects and pay them as they're really needed. You tied all your money up, your future monies into projects and none of it happened.
But I don't wanna, I agree with you. And I'd rather keep that money in capital. But I don't wanna tie up the capital money with putting the debt service back in there.
I, I, I can, I can understand that and I go along, but I think you need to keep an eye on it and keep, and watch it. I may not be here, you may not be here, but people need to keep an eye on it and watch it because at some point in time, you may want to flip it.
Right. I don't disagree with that. I'm just saying.
Yeah, I mean, since we're talking about it, like, you know, the public works building project on, on Ridge Ave. I mean, that's, that's one of the main projects we're talking about here. And you know, it all stemmed from trying to get out of the wastewater treatment plant. And how could we capitalize on that as no longer being a liability to the borough? And then, you know, roll that into a, a project that ultimately benefits, helps attract a better working environment for our public works crews. All those things that we would benefit from. However,
We didn't sell it yet.
Twenty twenty happened, building, building costs skyrocket. But it, it's kind of like, it's either here or there, or it's neither here nor there. You know, we can keep that down there. We could keep the liability and not change anything. And we wouldn't have that money moving around. But then we also wouldn't have the opportunity of, of building a really nice public works facility that would benefit the future of Columbia, um, that's built for the future of Columbia. And the reality is we've been working on this project for five years. And, I mean, with all due respect, I, I wish we could buy a fire truck for the fire company right now, but we can't. We can't afford it. Our insurance costs, it, I mean, the, the difference between last year's budget and this year's budget.
Is insurance.
Insurance. Most of that's insurance. And, and then on top of that, I mean, that's how many mills of a tax raise to get us back to the, the transfer from fund balance that we were at last year?
Yeah, you, you're talking.
And that's just insurance.
You're talking, what, four million dollars for the, for the, for the Public Works building?
We are not talking four million dollars.
Well, we, that's what I, I heard, I know.
No. No, I mean, we're getting together on Wednesday to talk through with the design crew. I mean, we ran into this before. Every, anytime we got an architect and just said, and we made sure this time around that Derek communicated, this is our highest dollar figure and gave them the budget. But it gets carried away. So there's.
We're getting into capital talk here.
I know, but I'm just saying.
Still, even at that fee, what I'm saying is.
I, I'll just.
Build capital off by getting rid of these properties.
The only thing I wanna say here.
The money to projects, whichever, whichever one it fits and whichever one is the most needed. Don't, don't tie them to it because you really don't have the money to do that.
We have the money. We have, and this is capital, but we have a grant from CSA or, yeah, community share. And then we have what we sold up at Blue Lane. If we use the RACP grant funds when they come in and then what comes in from the wastewater treatment plant, it's all, we'll be right where we need to be for an up and running facility. If all the pieces fall into place. But if we take any of that and, and just kick it down the road, then we're waiting for McGinnis to sell? And then, and then what happens next? I mean, my problem is if we waited five years already, Jake is waiting. I'm not saying it's on, I'm not trying to put it on Jake. I'm just saying we have to keep these projects going along because they're nickel and then diming us just in all the planning that goes into it. And then if we kick it down the road another five years, it's just creating a long-term mess.
Well, and now the, the public works facility is part of our RACP phase two. So it has to get done or we have to pay back the money that we haven't received yet for the RACP phase one from the market house.
Well, you may.
Where are we gonna get that damn money?
How are we getting that money?
See, we're, we're getting, you may wanna rethink selling the wastewater treatment plant. You've got some valuable buildings down there that you could use that RACP money on to re, to modify and stay right there.
Yeah, that, you're already.
We already owe the property. I mean, how, how much did they pay for the, where we're moving the new? The, uh, how much was the, the land purchase? Anybody remember?
Where's that?
Where we're moving the.
Where Ridge Avenue was at one point two?
So that's one point two and then at, at least in here, it shows, I, I know it's under capital, but it says two point five million for twenty twenty-six for the, uh, construction costs at Ridge Avenue and another hundred thousand for the engineering. So that does approach on just about four million when you put it all together. That's, that's the only thing.
If you're, if you're adding the purchase of the land. Yeah. The construction costs.
Make sure that two point five billion is, is that accurate or?
However, take out.
Yeah, what you're gonna sell.
Close to that for what we're selling that back part of it for.
Right. Hopefully.
Hopefully. Well, we authorized that to go to auction. That and the Front Street. I, I don't know. We authorized that a couple of months ago.
We didn't authorize Front Street to go to auction.
The, the parcels be- beside the.
Oh.
Beside the firehouse.
Yep.
Yeah, that was a couple of months ago.
I know.
I know.
Can someone get us an update on that?
Well, really.
Jack?
The RACP grants, right?
There's a lot of thoughts.
What's going on?
It doesn't have to happen now. It can happen as time goes on.
I'm trying to respond to that.
I think you really need to reevaluate.
No, no.
Where you're at.
No, I just wanna know.
Projects and finance.
Do you have like an update on the sale?
Mm-hmm. What was it? Front Street and?
Front Street and also the auction for?
Well, the auction for front, for the, the Front Street, we're talking about the properties beside the firehouse.
Not the firehouse or?
Not the firehouse. I mean.
You're gonna sell that?
I, I thought we were. We authorized that when we authorized the.
I thought we.
So you're not putting that as a package?
Yeah, I thought that was a whole package.
I don't know.
Two parcels.
I know it's two parcels.
Yeah.
But.
I, I mean, I think.
Who's gonna buy that corner parcel?
It's separated by, uh, by another landowner. There's another parcel in between there.
Oh, okay. So you're talking, that's two different, separate things and.
Yeah. Yeah, I, I don't remember when we, we authorized the public auction of that. But we did.
Are you sure?
Yeah. Well, no, I'm not sure. Cause I thought, when we, we talked about, I thought it was.
I think we talked, I remember talking about maybe we could.
No, I think we did.
But I don't, I don't, anyways, my memories.
We'll have to look back.
We just.
Thank you.
Thanks.
There's one lot beside Bonnie.
We should sell.
And there's one, I thought it was a corner lot, the triangle corner up towards Lucas.
No, that's part of the.
That's part of.
They, they moved that, they, they combined all that?
That's the firehouse, yeah.
Then that's, you know, there's like two.
That triangle is actually not even.
Yeah.
The parking lot is Norfolk Southern's.
It's a, it's a parcel on the corner of Union and Front.
Wherever that river is.
That's beside Bonnie.
Yeah. She sits in the middle.
Right. So it's that lot. The firehouse lot.
Right.
Actually two, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, so.
Madam President, before moving on, may we, uh, speak briefly about the MMO?
Yes.
We just learned, um, this week that there was a recalculation of the MMO for, uh, the police pension. And initially we thought of the bid was that it was gonna have a negative impact on the budget. But as we were back and forth with the actuary and we were able to actually confirm what our gross wages were going to be for the police department, that number is actually going down. So if you look on page seven, uh, within the public safety budget, it's account four ten one ninety-six. We had budgeted six hundred fifteen thousand, three hundred seventy-nine dollars. The adjusted MMO for our actuary is five hundred ninety-seven thousand, three hundred ninety-nine dollars. So it saved us thirty-five thousand, nine hundred eighty dollars. So we got some good news. The MMO has been prepared. It can be presented to you. You'll have to, uh, re- acknowledge the receipt of the. re- acknowledge the receipt of the adjusted MMO. You can do that at your next public meeting. So your blessing will make that change to the budget.
It's nice to have some positives, huh?
Anything else on the general?
The contract for,
Wastewater Treatment Plant?
The crossing.
Columbia Crossing.
The contract for that. I knew that contract was originally five years. And I kind of think we owed it all to the debt. If you have any other deal, what were that contract?
I think it's five years.
Was it last year? I think it was.
We can confirm that and get that information out to all of you.
But that contract isn't. I'm just talking to myself. This, so the management fees. Is the contract, I don't think the contract actually states the management fee, does it?
What line are we looking at?
Zero, one, four, five, four, three, seven, nine. I know that, that one fourteen is supported by the cell tower in Loxwana. Which I believe is right around seventy five thousand.
About seventy five, yeah. Loxwana's fifty and cell towers. Once it went up, it was around twenty four, twenty five.
So my question is, can we reduce some of that? Know why?
We lose the contract with Loxwana.
Why?
That's what the contract was signed with.
Oh, I'm not saying that. I'm saying if, right now the budget's, uh, one hundred fourteen eight sixty three. If we reduce it to seventy five.
The difference.
Right.
No, because we, we have, we have to put the whole expenditure on there because then we have the revenue line.
You show the revenue, yes. Yeah, the re, in and out, yeah.
Yeah. You have to show the revenue line then too.
I, I'm, I'm, I'm lost. I don't know what you mean by I have to show the revenue.
So.
You're showing you get seventy five thousand from.
Yes, we do.
Right. And I'm saying, put that on the crossings contract and management fees. I'm not saying I'll put it on there.
No, but.
That's revenue in, revenue out.
Right. But you have to show the revenue on the, in the revenue accounts. Not the, the expenditure accounts aren't. You have to show the revenue and then the expenditure.
I, I understand that. The difference between the seventy five thousand, one hundred fourteen eight sixty three is, I don't know, twenty five, thirty nine, thirty nine eight sixty three. That difference comes out of general taxes. That's what I'm saying. I'm not talking about the seventy five thousand. I'm talking about the thirty nine eight sixty three.
I believe, uh, in looking from this, I believe the cell tower and the, uh, from the cell tower income from Loxwana, it's around a hundred twenty five thousand.
Well, that changes everything, Matt.
Well, I'm looking at cell tower.
Yeah, what's the cell tower?
It looks like oh, one, three, twenty one, nine hundred on our budget here. It shows it as fourteen to sixteen. And I'm looking for the other one. I can't find it.
Yeah, the cell tower's fourteen.
Cell tower, fourteen, that's wrong.
Sixty four.
Yeah. Fifty. So sixty four thousand.
Right. So that was my question. I know that sixty four is zero, and that shown is revenue. The rest of that expense is tax dollars.
So you're saying we shouldn't, we shouldn't put any money into
The management?
The, the programs at all of, of that building.
Well, I'm not.
That's what you're saying, Eric.
Listen to me. I'm not going to go down the, my emotions are hurt. Sixty four thousand, whether it's true down or not, making sixty four thousand to that. We paid for the building. We paid for all the utilities. We paid for the cleaning services. Now, on top of that, they have rentals. And they would keep that rental money. They are a for-profit nonprofit. Not, not, not for-profit. They're obviously not giving out shares. But they are making money. And what I'm saying is, why are we continuing? They have, they have to grow. And they have to find funding other places besides just us. I know they do.
They do.
I know they do. But the situation we're in, I'm just saying, it's forty thousand dollars. And quite honestly, that forty thousand dollars could go to the library, it could go to the fire company, it could go to, there's a lot of other projects in Columbia.
I mean, I hear what you're saying, but I also hear like you were saying about before that, like, just for comparative is excuse me, the, uh, excuse me, uh, the weekend and after hours events that we would have in the market house and that you, uh, some, sometimes we waive the fees for them and the public has to know that's, you know, that's an investment in the borough. And I think this, that's what this is too. I mean, I don't, I mean, I know it's, I know it's money. I get that. But yeah, in, in looking at the bigger picture, I mean, the things that they do down there, you know, they, 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 they print out, they print out a lot of, uh, materials, uh, they help pay costs for that, they, they create the maps that the visitors use to come in there to get around Columbia Borough. We're not doing that. They are. There's a lot of things that they do that don't shoot, you know, you don't see upfront. That's what I'm saying. And, I mean, just sit back and say, you know, and I'm not, I know you're not saying this, but to think that they have any, that that's, that they're having a negative impact on Columbia anyways.
I never said they have a negative.
No, I know. I'm just saying. Sometimes it's the cost of doing business.
It is a financial negative impact.
I know, but it's the cost of doing business.
How much, how much is that repair cost gonna be?
Three hundred thousand dollars.
On top of what we have budgeted for now. Exactly. So we're doing, we have to get to that. Okay. So we're doing the same thing, basically. They were complaining about the fire company. They were complaining about the wastewater treatment plant. We have below par leases that were just getting walked all over. And we just keep paying for everything. Sorry.
I think we get far more value than what we're paying out of the contracts with Subcontinental Heritage. I mean, the, the cost of the programs, the collaboration they do with the library, schools, the schools, uh, not just Columbia schools, but other neighboring schools. The assistance that they give to the merchants association, uh, and, and the merchants by trying to, to drive traffic into our downtowns. And when you look at the costs, I mean, they provide us with those financials every year. And how much we paid versus how much they brought in to continue those programs. I mean, they get, they bring in above and beyond what we, what we give them and put on the different programming, the different, you know, things. They also, and they also waive uh, rental fees for municipalities, for the state, for, you know, other groups like that that want to come in too. Yes.
What is the budget number for the regale of that building?
That's in capital.
That's down in capital.
That's not in the big she is in capital.
Yeah.
Potentially. Potentially.
Let's see.
Yeah.
What year, what year exactly? I'm trying to think back. What the, what year did, did the Columbia Crossing build?
I'm gonna say eight, two thousand five.
Yeah, so it's about twenty. It's, it's closing on, closing in on like seventeen to twenty years old already. So. I mean, it's unfortunate that we had to put, you know, three hundred thousand dollars into like some.
I don't think we have to do that.
Repair. No, I'm just saying, but the repairs and the roof, but you know.
I didn't even do that.
I just redid my roof. So it wasn't happy.
I think we can look at D C N R.
I think.
So.
Wilson can speak to, you know, there was some structural things there that probably weren't done the way it should have been when it was initially.
Yeah, cause I remember being told that was gonna be like, I remember hearing, oh, it's gonna be, I mean, it's free. We're not gonna have to replace any of this stuff. So. Anyone else have thoughts on the, uh, Subcontinental Heritage? I mean, are you thinking that we should try and renegotiate the contract?
I already seen it happen with them. I just brought it to like.
Yeah.
That's, that's what we're.
I truly believe you need to scrutinize their plan. Glad they get it from us. They give it to us at least anyway.
And going forward, with all our, with all our, uh, accounts, I lost my accounts now. That was four seventy five. The four fifty two accounts, which is contributions and community investments. I think moving forward, the only way we give somebody a, a a donation or investment is if they provide a budget.
Yeah.
Yes.
If they have a budget. Eric, you make a good point and I want to talk about that. You know?
No budget, no request.
People are gonna want to kill me on this one, but actually I'm trying to help. If it is, this is what I'm saying. When the cats, when that started, and I mentioned it.
I didn't say it.
Yeah. But no, when, when that start, when that started. When that started, we had a group of volunteers that trapped cats, took them down to, to the borough sheds. The doctor came in and did the procedures. We paid the bill. I don't know how it's ever got to where it's at today. But there was a large discussion about giving money to organizations that have no affiliation or whatever have you. You're giving money to a group of people. Period. A group of people that don't sit well in auditing. There's no, there's no paper trail. There's no audit trail. Now, I'm not saying don't give them money. What I'm saying is, we have a line item. Oh, one, four, ten, two, twenty eight in the police budget for animal control and shelter fees. That's where that used to be. In other words, they submitted invoices to the borough and the borough paid the invoices. And we had a paper trail. We had an audit trail. What I'm saying is that's what should happen. So actually they're gonna get what they want, probably even more, where when they submit the bill, we pay the bill and it comes in and it goes out into that line item. And, and then we have an audit track of it. But to give money to a group of people that aren't a four, five oh one C three or, or even totally organized, I, I have a hard time with that.
Well, that's why I said I would rather give the donation of the Columbia Animal Shelter, since they're the one providing the service. And I mean, per the borough code, technically that's who we can give money to is a humane society that's providing a service.
And, and, and I can live with that, but I personally like the idea of going back to where we were, where you submit a bill, we pay the bill and we're tracking this. Now we have an audit trail. If you're gonna give it to the animal shelter, I like to see animal shelter in the budget.
Well, and I, I would kind of like to, with that, I would, I would kind of like to see an accounting of you know, a general location of like a block. This cat came from X block. This block, this cat came from here. You know, so we know how many, how many colonies do we have? Are these coming from general colonies or are they coming from not colonies? Or, you know.
I don't have a problem. Either way, I like the line item that we do have and the way we did it because it, it keeps a trail. I like your, your thought. You know, I really want to help the people and I want to see they get the money to be able to do what they, what they do because they're doing good work. They're out there busting what's doing that. And I don't have a problem with that, but I think it needs to be cleaned up. I'm not, I'm not doubting anybody's integrity, but I think for our, for our purposes in borough, we have to have some kind of a trail that we know where this money's going and how it's being used.
I, I agree with that too. And I think I, we brought it up in the, in our in-depth discussion before. But I think that got shot down before, but I think, I think we should just have it in our line item on animal control and do reimbursement.
Well.
Unless they're willing to.
Remember why we stopped doing it that way?
I know why.
Yes.
Do you remember what was?
Yes.
The amount, number one, it's the amount of transactions. Two, it's individuals coming in here and collecting.
So.
Well, not if the, not if the animal shelter sends a monthly invoice of cats taken.
Here's, here's what happened. Okay. Cause I'm the one that sat here in, when we were doing the budget for twenty twenty one. And I said, look, we have a feral cat problem. And whenever I tell people you need to T N R, they always say I'm not paying for a cat that's not mine. So my suggestion at the time was maybe we come up with, and I had worked with Tammy and said, let's come up with a program. If we tell people, they, if they trap a cat and bring it to you, you fix it and you send the bill to us. And she said, okay. And I said, that first year, we're gonna put a thousand dollars in the budget. We're gonna, we're gonna get a handle on this. And that's what we did. We did that in, in the twenty twenty one budget was the first year we budgeted money. And a few months after that, into that year, that's when Alan Landsman came and said, you guys are gonna pay. We want to help with this. We're gonna get this together. And then they were taking, they were trapping and they were taking them mostly to York because at that time the Columbia Animal Shelter was having an issue keeping vets. So they were taking them to York. They were taking them to Lancaster. And every time they would do that, they would have, you know, X number of appointments. At that time, then the York S P C A or whatever would send us the bill and we would pay it. We would pay the, them directly. We would pay Lancaster directly. And then it became, well, we want to do more and we need traps. And so then we were convinced that they were gonna form the cat action team. And then the next year, the money went to them. And that's how it happened.
What subhand invoices, was it because?
We did it. We did, we they they said it was, well, there were also a couple of times where people on the team, instead of following our procedure that we had spelled out. instead of following our procedure that we had spelled out, they took it upon themselves to pay and then come in here and want the cash back. And it was getting messy.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And there were times where we had questions about whether or not they were actually cats from Columbia, because there were times that there were cats that were not from Columbia taken. And we were paying for them. We said we didn't want to do that. And then it became, okay, then the, the, Alan said, they were, they had processes in place. They were now monitoring it and everything else. And we were told the best way to do it was to pay, to give the money to the Cat Action Team.
But see, we can do that. We can ensure that people aren't doing what you're saying by the animals, the cat shelter sending us the invoice.
Yes.
I would be in agreement.
Because they're performing the service. Now we're clean.
I would be in agreement to, given the full donation, which I think last time you said maybe three thousand instead of the one thousand. I would be in agreement to the three thousand if it went to the Columbia Animal Shelter.
See, I would rather pay invoices. I would, I would rather pay invoices than give money.
And then require the budget.
So I, I will say this, in, in defense of the, the C cat program, there's other expenses involved.
Yeah.
That they're not gonna, we're not gonna pay. And they may use this money as a way to cover some of them until they get donations where, but there's traps. There's food expenses, there's pee pads, there's all kinds of outside expenses besides just the T N R process.
Well, but in that line item, if they can justify, if, if, if that, if they're working out of that line item in the budget, those things can happen.
I, I, I just think, I think.
With your approval.
I think that gets messy.
And the animal shelter also said that they would.
They said they'd cover any, any delta.
They would support that, so I think we give our money to the animal shelter and let them disperse it to them. As they see that. And then we'll see how they do it when they present the.
Have C cat here. They are under. Under the shelter and they finance separately from the shelter. If we give the money to the shelter, the shelter is free to use it. But then we basically kill C cat.
That's why I say stick to the line item.
So just be careful what we do. You know, I think we pretty much all agreed that the twenty-five hundred, whatever it is this year, goes to C cat this year. But I really think we need to start having meetings and, and with all of them, not just C cat.
Put the twenty-five hundred in that line item.
Not just.
And that is justified. You know, they're doing it with dogs, and on dogs, we're even getting a return back on some of our money.
C cat would not, C cat would not exist if one did not fund it.
We, you fund them out of that money. You're paying their bills.
The animal shelter said if they were gonna support them.
Because Mr. McConley came here and said that he didn't care if you gave him the money or not, he was gonna make sure it happened.
Yes.
So he didn't say, we need your money. He said, basically, we'll make it happen however we have to make this happen.
What I'm saying is.
That's what I'm saying. So it come from there versus.
We're gonna pay all your vet bills. We'll pay all your vet bills. I want to see the program first, but I, I want to see paper trails.
All right. So what do we do?
Well, again, I, I said, mentioned C cat, but real, or actually, the mayor mentioned C cat. It's really all of them.
Right.
Um, Columbia Historical. C H P S.
Oh, you mean all of them, yeah.
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 That's another one. We don't have no idea. We know nothing. It, we just give them five thousand dollars every year. I know the cupola's falling down. Apparently they have a bad furnace. Outside mortar needs repainted, it needs repainted. I mean, if their budget is, what'd he say, thirty thousand a year or something like that? It doesn't seem right to me.
And, I mean.
So I, I think.
The building's close to demolition by neglect.
Right. We're investing back into the community to, to organizations that are supposed to benefit the people of Columbia. And if we're just throwing money somewhere that it's being wasted, we're not really doing it for the people of Columbia.
I won't call any, I, I won't call any organizations.
I'm not, I'm not.
And I understand that too, Eric, but I like the, the fact that if the question ever arises, there's a trail that, that will answer any question.
Right.
That, that's my point.
So you're saying you want to see a budget submitted every year from these organizations?
Right.
Yes.
Absolutely.
We used, we used to, we used to require that. Matter of fact, those guys were invested putting the budget, giving the budget to us every year.
And the Veterans Council, they would just spend their money on the parade?
Yes, that's all they would.
Right.
So we would want a budget from them as well?
Mm-hmm.
And, and if they put one line item in their parade, at least we know where the money's going.
You're probably the only organization that gives us that information.
All right. So along with our donation, would we ask for?
I think if you want to come in and request money, I don't care who it is.
Favoring the budget and just let them know, but I think there'd be a criteria. If you're gonna come and ask for money.
Right.
Please come prepare with a budget for council, okay?
Now, I'm not saying that should be, well, I'm not saying anything. I, I think that's what you're doing.
It seems to me like Sascana Heritage, part of that money should go in this section. After listening to you guys talk. Like maybe that, actually that sixty.
It shows, it shows in their budget though.
It's in parts and right.
It, yeah, it's professional services, really.
Oh, it's out of the parts and right. Okay, that's right. Okay.
Yeah.
Yep.
All right. I agree with Barry on that.
All right. Is there anything else in general fund that?
Well, Leo, where, where are you at with the L E V lighting?
Oh, wait, now they even go there.
I'm gonna give you one. I met a guy. I met a guy, Kuzi, wants to talk to us about solar.
No.
Oh, my.
Well, Susan Love wants us to turn the furnace into a solar, into a.
Yeah.
Yeah, solar was.
Mayor, I may say, Ron and I had the discussion today about the lighting in this building and around the community. So Ron is going to contact P P L as we check, see what kind of programs are out there.
We need to go to L E A.
Yes.
They often have a lot of this.
They have some money.
They have a lot of incentives just for that. I, I haven't dealt with it for a while, but I'm sure there's still programs there. Look about it, if you will, and kind of give you an idea of what it'll cost and what the return will be. But then moving forward, you have quite a bit of savings. So you, you may have discovered, we have like twenty-some effective.
So we'll get back to you with the information that we get.
Which is light.
There was under codes. I'm trying to think where it was. Anyways, the budget for contracting. It said it would be reimbursed. It was for ten thou, it went up to ten thousand dollars from like twenty-five hundred. Why can't I think of?
Four thirteen, three seventeen?
No. Or which, which line was that?
Oh, four thirteen, three seventeen.
Yeah.
Contracted, contracted services remedial.
Yeah, is that line reflected in the revenue side?
Yes.
When they get the payback from, I, I think that's, I mean, Paul can correct me if not, but I think that's more like, uh, somebody has high grass and, and it's being neglected, neglected. Like the borough said, we just gotta go in and do something about it. And we do. And that gets, you know, more or less gets, gets lean again. You put a lien on the.
Which line in the revenue is that reflected on?
It is.
Uncollectable leads.
No. I know, right? I.
It definitely gets lean against the house.
I think we put that in the code, in three sixty-two, four sixty, code lien recovery, even though it's not technically a lien, I'd say it's a lien. But I think that's where it goes.
Four sixty. Okay, yeah, I see that's. Ten thousand, yep. And then the only other thing I wanted to bring up, and maybe we'll discuss this further, was, but the, for the fire company, the one ninety towards the fire apparatus, um, I don't know where our discussion is gonna lead to balance this budget as it stands in terms of what we're bringing in and, and what the transfer from the fund balance is, but currently it's, you know, we're eight, eight hundred thousand more than last year. And so I guess my point is, I think we need to look, look strongly at that, and I think that the fire company chief, I mean, I understand the need, but I also think that there needs to be consider, consideration of what does it look like to maintain the, the apparatus as it is? And can we help with that, what little we can, but unfortunately, we're just between a rock and a hard place right now. Um, and that's, you know, I forget what, what do we get per mil of tax?
Four forty.
Four forty. So as it stands now, we would have to raise two mils just to get back to the level of where we were at last year in terms of how much we're pulling from fund, the fund balance.
And depending on what they're maintaining, what we would contribute to maintaining the current truck that they have as opposed to, and how much of a difference in price would that be? And how much of a mil would we have to raise if we went that way? Would we, would we not have to raise maybe?
Well, I mean, it's, that's a half a mil of what, what they're asking for, for the new fire truck is half a mil of the difference that I'm talking about, that eight hundred thousand. So we're, if we eliminate, if we didn't pay the extra two hundred thousand for the fire apparatus, we're still a mil and a half off of where we were last year because of our insurance, extra insurance costs and personnel. There's just a lot happening. But the question is where, you know, where do we draw the line and are we raising taxes this year?
No, I don't believe we are.
I don't want to raise taxes this year.
I never want to raise taxes, but gotta pay the bills.
So if we use eight hundred thousand from fund balance this next year, where does that put the, the balance? If, if we don't raise anything?
What's left in fund balance after that?
Yeah.
Very little. Like, less than four hundred thousand.
That's, that's not good. We have way more liability than that.
What do you mean?
Saying the, the amount of properties, the amount of things that could go wrong makes four hundred thousand look small.
Right now you're tracking to end the year about five hundred thousand dollars or less than what you projected.
So we will actually be putting two hundred thousand away? Into the fund balance?
I don't think it's gonna be that much.
I mean, now we're tracking at two over three, correct?
We have no more, we're, we're, all of our revenue is in though. Yeah, all, all of our revenue is in.
I'm not talking about revenue, I'm talking about expenses.
I know, but to this, to everything now is, we still have, what? Two months to go. I don't think it's gonna be, it, it might be.
It's just a number you can't.
Yeah.
Uh, at the end of the day, for the year to date, certainly, we've been running under budget for expenditures and we've been overachieving in revenues. But as Heather pointed out, as you get to this time of year, your revenues are really gonna start decreasing. Your tax revenues in for the year, those types of things.
They're gonna decrease, but you're, so will your expenditures.
No, the big ones usually come in.
I mean, your expenditures still, are still coming in vet good.
For the year, we should still be under budget for expenditures.
Yes. That's what I'm saying, for, to the tune of, the last projection I saw was three hundred and some thousand. And I'm saying we're gonna end up somewhere close to five.
That would be nice.
Yeah, it would be. I don't think it's gonna be that high.
You ended up five hundred next year.
Let's say, let's say.
Last year we pulled out of.
Conservatively, let's say it just is a wash and we didn't have to pull anything from the fund balance. So that, could we, can we expect that next year? I mean.
No.
How inflated is our budget for the twenty twenty-six?
And that's, that's a question, like, how inflated, it is, you know what I mean? Like.
It's just every line.
We, we've worked really hard over the last couple of years to get, to get real, uninflated budgets. We've worked hard because to get out of that mindset of we're gonna, we're gonna inflate it because we, then we can look like we are way under budget because we didn't spend. But why do we have to, why are we having that mindset when we should be saying we want a realistic budget?
We do make, Heather, we do make a realistic budget. And, and the budget is not, my knowledge is not inflated, no. What happens, what happens is during the year, and if you look at it, you'll see where the money's coming from. The money's coming primarily out of the police department.
Well, right, I know that.
And it's not inflated, it's because officers may be off on medical, may have left, uh, and not replaced. Those kind, those monies, that's the salary monies that's, that's doing that. That's where that money's coming from.
Well, right, and that, our savings this year was due to, you know, we had some staff that was, some staff positions that were open for extended period of time and things like that.
They weren't inflated, it wasn't an inflated budget. It was just, that's the way it worked out.
You know, we spent a lot of time to create a realistic budget.
Yes. But like I said, and correct me if I'm wrong, chief, under, there were circumstances where people were on medical and things like that.
It happens every year.
That helped us out.
It happens every year, yes.
So that's not inflation.
You know, this year alone, we had two officers that were off on, like, you know, on, uh, short-term disability for an extended period of time.
And that's gonna show up.
That's correct.
Well, and we had two, two of your guys, two of your positions effectively that for the better part of the year that were not filled.
Were vacant.
Yeah.
And that brought a reassessment and the town is hoping to.
Yes.
So depending how you do this project, if it only makes it look likely, that's going to increase. I would say the project, the way all of it's set up, if it's two brothers take more money.
But Frank, during an assessment year, you.
You have to balance.
You have to adjust your millage.
Right.
So that you're tax neutral.
Right, and that's what happened to us the last time.
Right.
We adjusted the millage.
What you can up at ten percent.
Yeah, you can up at ten percent.
Right.
And the last time, after the mistake.
Well, I wanted to.
We didn't do that.
I wanted to, but the rest of council did, but.
That would have helped because so many, like, a quarter of the properties in the borough appealed their assessment and won.
And it was a lot of money, almost a million bucks.
Right.
It was a lot of money.
Ten percent, which would have covered.
It was a lot of money.
Okay, so can I ask my question again? If we don't pull any transfer from fund balance this year, but our budget is accurate for next year, does that still bring us down to four hundred thousand?
Yeah.
So you were, okay, you were calculating that part in.
Yep. Yep.
Before we go out in general, I just wanted to bring something up. When I, we had our last meeting, last meeting we had, we were discussing personnel, et cetera, for honor of public safety code compliance and public safety planning and zoning, I was looking at the, the positions and I had brought, I had, I looked at it as code compliance, my hair's a ball, and we have the code inspector full-time, property inspector, that's new, and the property inspector full-time that we have. We also have the part-timer, and I was, I went down, I saw the zoning officer. My calculations at that time, I for, I wasn't thinking about the new hire we have, I can't think of her name right off the bat. I wasn't thinking of her being in that position, so I just wanted to bring it back again, if we really want to accomplish these things that we're talking about. You know, so Paul and I were talking, we had a meeting this morning to go through some of our legislation items, and at the end, we were discussing this, and I really thought, you know, when, when they said, oh, no, we're not removing the part-timer, I thought that was gonna be an addition to the the two, so I, I, again, would say, you know, if we really want to look at, you know, really, really getting the nitty-gritty of enforcing all this code stuff that we get constantly hammered with. The, if, if we're gonna keep the part-time position, that's fine, but I really think that position really still needs to be looked at to move to a full-time position or add another full-time and get that part-time. I'm just, I know it's more money, but if you change the part-time to full-time, I think it changes out to around maybe like four, thirty-five, forty thousand, forty-five thousand, between thirty-five and forty-five, depending on. So it's just something I really think.
Kelly, if you're looking at O-one, four thirteen, one forty-two.
Yep.
It says new, so we are adding a new position if full-time.
Right, but I was thinking, you know, I was going back, I was just looking at numbers. Not just looking, I was just looking at numbers and I saw, I, I was thinking that the zoning officer was going to be new as well, but again, I wasn't, in my mind, I wasn't putting a lease in that, in that position, which is four fourteen, one twenty-two, so I was thinking that was gonna be an additional position, so I'm just bringing it out. If we do, we do, if we don't, we don't, but, you know, I do know we have a zoning slash codes department that has uh, worked, has worked very hard, in my opinion, and is probably overbooked for what people expect out of a position, given the numbers. Just my opinion, but just food for thought.
I mean, that's one of the departments where there's revenue for the work that's being done, so.
I know the point of code enforcement is, you know, it is, the ultimate goal of code enforcement is compliance. But non-compliance, you know, that's why we have a fee schedule that obviously brings money in for us for non-compliance. And I, I do know, just from talking, you know, to the guy, the people that work in codes and with Paul as well and others, that there are things out there that yeah, we know that there's a problem here, X, Y, Z, or this is a problem or that's a problem. Well, if you don't have enough people to cover it, these people have to, we're expecting like Paul to, to write, help with writing a legislation, but and manage the staff and also, and also Paul gets out in the field as well. Okay, and then the people that are out in the field, they gotta write their reports up, they gotta go to the courts when the, the people challenge these things in court. These, these things take time. And that's time when they're in court or when they're working on other things, reports, et cetera, that they are not. We're not getting the most bang out of the buck, bang for our buck out of that position.
Well, and I know, I think, I think the last time we did the analysis was two years ago on the, to make, when we were checking our fee schedule. And the code compliance department was, and the zoning department were both fee, were, were both revenue expenditure neutral. They, they were Brian, we'll have to, I'll have to see if I can find those reports, but we had done that for every department, I think like two years ago. So that's something, you know, next year, we can look at, think about that again.
Yeah, that's another thing I've.
Once.
It's not necessarily tied, but it is tied, this is our twenty twenty-six fee schedule.
Right.
I mean, I, I've been looking at it myself, I'm sure other departments are, but I think as a council, we need to discuss that as well.
Anything else on general? Yes. No, you can say something, we're on a general fund, so.
Um, so I don't envy the decisions you have to make. I understand the situation the borough's in. And I understand that there's some things in progress and some questions that you don't all have the answers for. I sat here and I listened to you talk about value to the borough and these different organizations and the value they provide. I'm a little biased. I think the fire department provides more value than anybody else that you're giving money to for the amount of money you give us. I am unsure how to make it much clearer that the volunteer fire service is not what it was. The membership, the people's commitment, level of involvement. And it is happening everywhere around us. When I joined in two thousand, Lancaster City was the only paid department in Lexington. Manheim Township went to a combination department, now they're fully paid. East Templefield always had volunteers, they're now paying staff to drive and, and field their apparatus. York County, York City was paid. Every place around York City is paid. West York, West Manchester, Springins. We are trying to avoid those types of things, but we are working our volunteers to the bone to cover operating expenses. We just went through a budget process and our budget's up fifty thousand dollars. That's not because we want to, or because we're buying extra stuff or cool stuff, extra whistle or an extra light. You know, we pay fifty thousand dollars in utilities for that building a year. I think the borough has been extremely fortunate with the amount of money they've given to the department in the last twenty years. And we've been able to do that for a couple of reasons. We have very good membership, they do a lot of fundraising, we have a social club that provides a, a lot of money for us. Almost a quarter of our budget comes from social club. But it's coming to a point where the model is unsustainable. We cannot run apparatus that is and I'll, you know, hypothetically, falling apart and provide the level of service that we need to provide. Fire trucks aren't built the way that they were fifty years ago, thirty years ago. And so we're trying to go on a twenty-year replacement schedule. You guys cannot give us any money this year or in twenty-six, and we can just kick the can down the road. And maybe we keep our engine and our rescue for twenty-five years. I don't know if they will make it, but maybe that's what we have to do. But the fact of the matter is the replacement has to happen, the money has to come, and the membership is not as great as our membership is. It is not where we were in the past. We didn't rely on the borough so much because we didn't have to. We're starting to get to a point where we really desperately need the borough support. And we can talk about, do we need to replace fire truck, or do you need to do this, or do you need to do that? The long and short of it is that you know, the total budget that I'm asking for from the borough is more than the police budget increase. And I understand there's reasons for that, I understand it's about insurance and other things, I get it. You go line by line, the market house gets more money than the fire department does. Columbia Crawse's management fees are more than the fire department gets. The, the newly elect, or newly lieutenant's position is more than the fire department gets. And everybody has made their decisions and they're all for good reasons, and I'm not gonna question any of them. But I will say that I feel as though because of the past success that we've had at the firehouse and the fact that we haven't had to ask for so much money, that that's really playing on the decision-making that you guys are gonna have to make.
Can I say something back to that?
Sure.
I, I, I agree with everything you said right up to the very end. That had absolutely, speaking for me personally, this is my fourteenth year on a, a council somewhere, so this is my fourteenth budget we're working on. That has never entered into my personal opinion, I'm not, I can't speak for anybody else, I only speak for myself. I actually, at the last meeting, you know, I really, I kinda looked at the cost of the borough on a holistic viewpoint, including the fire company, because obvi- obviously the borough is obligated by law to have a fire company, and if you guys decide to walk away from it, we'd have to find a way to fund it and run it. So we, obv- obviously, we, I cer, I know everybody sitting in this room appreciates what you're doing, I, I would love, I, I, you know, I, I know it's costing two point two million if you get it one way and one point six million if we can pay for it outright. If there was some way to get it out of capital and do it and just pay you, and they say, okay, in return, we won't answer that one eighty-eight for a certain number of years, that, I would love to do that. But it, it's, there's not enough potatoes in the, in the bucket to, to do it all, I mean, if, if, if it was in the capital bud, capital fund budget, I'd be fighting like hell for it right now. But, you know, again, like other council members say, we went through the whole, this whole process and, you know, I totally get where you're coming from. Uh, but the, the act that, that it's some way slanting us into thinking, oh, they'll get by anyway, I don't think anybody is from Fields that.
I wasn't necessarily pointing fingers.
No, I wasn't.
I just know that there is a common misconception in Columbia
I know, but when you paint a broad brush.
That, that we have, we're sitting on a goldmine. And the fact of the matter, that's not true. You know, we run two businesses and we do have a safety nest egg in case something were to happen, but that nest egg will run dry if, if we do not get increased support. I mean, I can answer any question you have, I know we've talked about this through and through, and I understand that you, you can't, you can't get, what's the expression, blood out of a turnip or something like that, I get it, I get it. But at the same time, when you look at other line items, when you look at other increases and we glaze over them and then we spend twenty-five minutes talking about a fire truck, you know, it, it's really hard for myself and my group to think that outside of some lip service, we have support from the borough. And I think you all say you do, and I think you all really want to. And I just I just hope you can get there.
If only our insurance companies would come and ask us if they could raise our, their rates.
No, I mean, our insurance is going up too.
Jared, let me ask you a question. When, when, when would you order this fire truck?
It's already ordered.
It is ordered. So I can tell you this.
Okay, when do you have to make the first payment?
We have to make the first payment when the truck arrives.
Twenty-nine.
Twenty twenty-nine. So.
So what you wanna do is you wanna pay it down?
There's a couple of things.
Tell me what you wanna do between now and twenty twenty-nine.
So it's two point two million. The sooner we start financing, the greater of a discount we will get. So when we signed in August, we had a two hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollar discount if we would sign, if we would start fun, uh, financing that debt. Obviously, it's based off interest and the interest goes down every day. So the sooner we can start financing that truck and paying on it, then we can get a discount, whether it be two hundred fifty thousand, two hundred and hundred, whatever it is. We do not have to pay anything until twenty twenty-nine. The way that the loan repayment is, it's a fifteen-year repayment. So this is what I was talking about in July, if we wait until twenty twenty-nine, we will not pay this fire truck off until twenty forty-four. And we anticipate to have to replace one, if not both, of our engine or engine rescue in twenty thirty-nine. Which, at the way fire trucks are going up, who knows what that's gonna cost? I can tell you, we bought that engine and rescue in twenty nineteen, it cost one point three million combined. If we were to buy those exact two same trucks today, we'd be right at two and a half million. So five years, we almost doubled the cost of a fire truck. That's why we thought if, the sooner we can start, the sooner we can pay it off, the sooner we can get our next one or two.
Jared, two engines, a rescue and a truck, right?
No. One engine, one engine rescue and a truck. We have three mainline pieces.
Okay. So how many personnel are for the engine?
You can put six on each fire truck.
Minimum of four?
Minimum of four.
And the rescue?
Same.
Four and a truck.
Four.
And with a tiller, you'll need a driver.
A tiller will have, will have seven.
So, anyway, you're looking at a squad about fifteen people?
Uh, four, yeah, I'm.
Minimum.
Twelve, twelve minimum.
All right, twelve minimum.
Yeah.
Uh, our current police department is three per shift, right? They would need twelve. The police department budget is four.
Well, I can help you out here, Eric.
Go ahead.
I, cause I know where you're going, and I was going to point this out. I know from researching and my networking and talking to people at PSAB and, and the statistic they gave us at the conference was years ago, you could say that if you had a paid fire department, you could count on it costing about half of your, of what it cost you to have a police department. Now you are looking at, for a paid fire department, you're looking at five times the yearly budget for a police department for a paid fire department. So we went from a half to five times in ten years.
So I, I greatly understand going from four and a half to twenty-one, twenty-two million dollar budget increase, asking for two hundred or two million is not that big of a deal. I totally get it, and I'm with you on that.
Right.
And I think the people of Columbia need to understand that. At one time, there was five stations. I'll roughly guess nine pieces of apparatus. Probably twenty-five, thirty people per station. That's not existing anymore. And we are on the cusp of going paid. So the harsh reality is let's support the fire, the volunteer fire company as long as we can. Because even though it sounds expensive upfront today, we're talking two million dollars and we don't have it in our budget supposedly. This is gonna change drastically, we have to go pay. So I think we need to go reach deep and hard and figure out a plan.
Well, and, and so I think that's the extreme.
It is extreme, but that's reality.
Fire department goes away, you bring in a, a paid fire department and it costs you twenty million dollars. There's obviously steps in between. One of them is if we were to do. One of them is if we were to do any sort of merger or regionalization with other departments. There's one happening not very far away from here. And I, and I don't know if there has been any conversation at the borough level with any of their township supervisors or managers. But I can tell you that the, the, uh, the talk is that we were not invited into any sort of regionalization discussions because we are not supported by the borough and the borough would not foot the bill that would be required to do so. Now, if you haven't had any conversations, then that's just people talking. But, um, it's a very real thing and it's a very real possibility that that comes down the road. And what I say at my department is even if the fire line decides that they think that that's a good idea and the membership agrees that's a good idea, it doesn't mean a whole lot. Because really, it's between the township and the two boroughs to have that discussion about how things are gonna be split up. Blue Rock did it not too long ago. And you can talk to people just like I do, and some people have negative opinions about how the money is, who's paying the bill and who's spending the bill. And so those types of things are gonna come up that I hope were to happen before we go from volunteer company to a fully paid department.
Oh, yeah, I agree. But like you said, you start out and you say, okay, we need drivers to guarantee that we have somebody-
Yeah.
So you start with drivers. Next thing you know, well, you know, daytime, we're short. So we have a day shift. You know, and next thing you know, everybody's saying, well, if you're getting paid and I'm not, and I'm not getting paid, why am I doing it?
I can tell you historically-
It snowballs real fast.
Historically throughout the county, there's, there seems to be a normal progression from a volunteer company to, we don't have volunteers at the firehouse fast enough, so we're gonna have guys live here. So they go from volunteer to live-in. And then they can't get the live-ins for whatever reason, whether it's location or, you know, people get older, get jobs out, wherever. So then they go to, okay, well, we're gonna, we're gonna pay a driver, but we still have a couple of guys coming from home or whatever. And then it goes to, well, those guys can't make the fire trucks anymore, so they stop coming out. So now we need staff. And so it's a general progression. Anytime you do a career, I have not seen great examples of combination departments for that reason. And normally what happens is, you know, you're talking about four firefighters per piece of apparatus. Columbia won't ever do that. They can't pay $20 million. It's never gonna happen. But what you would do is, okay, we'll have a paid driver and we'll expect volunteers to show up at the scene. When the volunteer stops showing up, you're like, okay, well, we, we need one more guy.
That's what I'm saying.
And then so, so then you have three fire trucks there with six guys and they're expected to do what needs done. And any of these other municipalities are fighting and, and anything you see, I don't know if you see it, but minimum staffing is a big deal. Anywhere from New York City, the whole way to, you know, Springsberry Township. I mean, you need to have three people on a fire truck. And the chief can tell you, you have call-offs, you have vacation, you have injuries. And then so minimum staffing goes out the window.
Jared, I've had this conversation, urgent conversation with West Hemfield County.
There you go. That's your answer.
His, his words were, in the next 10 years, we can't avoid having to do this because of the drop-off of volunteers. Now, as you mentioned, West, West Hemfield and Mountainville are top of the river. Your dad did this, so you probably know this. When we had five fire companies, the borough said, you need to get, you're gonna need to get down to three. So they got down to three. Then said, you need to get down to one fire company. Your dad worked his butt off setting that up, getting it down to this one fire company that we currently have. The thought process at that time was to get down to one fire company and then talk with adjacent municipalities about merging. And I've asked that question several times. At that time, they told us, you get your act together and get down to one fire company and then come and talk to us.
Yep.
It's never happened. Now, West Hemfield, their manager, they know it. They realize that they, and they know how many calls you guys are making to them.
To them, right.
We need to take a look at that.
Yep, absolutely.
And, and, and that's not gonna happen today. That's not to be settled today. But what I, where, so I'm in favor of that. I'm in favor of us getting together. We've even been talking, I don't know how many times, chief, with police departments and, and different municipalities about those work. We had, we just had a conversation this year for outburging. But what I'm getting at is, is there a way? I'm gonna use the word 200,000. Is there a way we can make that payment sometime during the year? And what I'm looking at is goes back to what I'm talking about with these properties, this capital. Is there a way that we can do that? At some point during the year, if we sell one of these properties or something? And it's in case, if it was up to me, I'd move it to capital and buy the truck outright. I don't have that money. We may someday.
I'll say-
Well, it'd be the best time, when, when would we have to give you that 200 or-
Leo-
Give you that 200?
We typically pay, we typically send out the checks for the community things. September, I know this year it's just napoo. Um, but we typically send them out in September. We wait until after we have received, until after the discount-
Those revenues are in.
Right, until after like the-
I understand that, okay.
That's normally when we send them out.
So say we're gonna do that. And we look at if there's capital money, if there's capital money, move it into capital and do it. By September, I would hope, I swear this, that we hope, that by September, some of these properties have been sold and there's some money in capital.
You or me both.
And then we can do this. I would love to see enough money in capital to say, here's the two, here's the 1.6 or whatever have you, we're gonna buy this engine.
It would, it would be about 1.9.
1.9, we can, that we would buy this, this, this piece apparatus. I'd love to be able to do that, but I don't know what's coming in. And that's where I was getting at earlier when I said, you need to look at what's coming in and build capital and then allocate it to projects. Here's another project. This may be more important than any project you got.
I'll say that I like the original plan that Jared, that you laid out where the replacement plan, where this money that's coming in regularly over the years then builds into a fund for replacing in the future when those engines come due. And if it's something that we can swing into the general fund, then it's not a surprise. And it's not, my problem with pulling it out of capital is it's a one-time dose and then we don't know where it'll come from again, because we don't have properties that we can continually sell. But the one thing on this, and I, I forget what the timeline on the bond payoff is. But that's eventually gonna be paid off.
Twenty thirty eight.
Twenty thirty eight?
That's right.
That's eventually gonna be paid off. And we'll have uh, adjusted for inflation, we'll, we'll have our payment for fire apparatus right there. But i- if, I mean, it, it's an important, this is, we, we spent how much time talking about $2,500 for cats?
I know.
This is incredibly important. This is, in terms of the value we get, I see it. I mean, it's-
Leave the 200,000 in and figure it out. When you start getting some money in capital, figure it out. If you can take, pay $200,000 this year and then have to pay, and pay the balance of it next year or the year after next because your capital built up, then do it. There's no, there's no way out of it. You gotta pay the 200,000 this year with that first payment.
They're not making a payment.
Yep. And what-
They're not making a payment today.
Not right now. So what will happen is I will, once we start financing, we'll put 10% down, 10% down, um, you know, 220,000. We, we have the funds to put 220 down.
That's, I, let me, let me re-say this. Here, actually, you don't need any money until
Twenty nine.
Twenty nine.
They do need money.
Well, it depends, it depends how you wanna structure the payment. We could pay the entire truck from capital in 2029. At 2.2 million, free and clear.
Right.
Or we can start the financing now and get a substantial discount, 200, 250, $300,000 discount.
Oh, I, I, I am a little confused honestly. If you don't have to put any money down to 29 till you receive delivery of it, then in theory, you would start financing in 2029.
Right.
But if you pay it off in 2029, there's no financing. That's your gain.
Right, there's no financing, but there's, but there's no discount. So you save on the interest, but you don't, you don't get a discount upfront. If you had 1.9 million dollars in capital right now, that would be the cost of the truck and it would be done today. If we wait till 2029, it's 2.2. If we finance it in 29, it'll be 2.7.
So we go from 1.9 to 2.2. $300,000.
Yeah, that's my whole point. Okay, obviously.
Could it be, could it be paid off early if you go into financing? Is there no-
Well, yeah, yeah, you, there's no penalties for paying off. You just don't get any, the only savings you, well, I don't know how that would work with interest, but you, your only savings would be interest.
Right.
Right.
To them.
Yeah. So the only thing, you get a, you get a discount for paying a company for a product you haven't received yet.
Mm-hmm. Right, because they, they gain interest on that money and they're just giving it back.
Right.
Yep. So it, assume it's 5% interest. They're giving us that 5% for those, the next 43 month, for whatever it is. And then-
So the biggest thing you need to walk away from us is a commitment, not too much an actual dollar bill.
I mean, if you got 20 bucks, Eric, I'll take it, but-
But that's the problem, I don't.
No, but I believe you, you explained to us the last time you were here that you need that, you need that extra 189 to meet your budget in, to pay your current vehicles.
No. We can meet our budget on our own as we're doing with the 111 you're currently giving us.
The 189 is for the new equipment.
189 is for the new truck. If we get that extra 189, we will start paying on the latter truck next year, which, which decreases the timeline for when it'll be paid off. And it'll also give us that front-end discount the sooner we start paying. If we wait till, I mean, let's just say we wait till August.
Can we have a committee get together? I don't care if it's finance, chief.
Yeah.
Cause here's, here's what I'm thinking.
So-
I'm thinking first of all, we have to agree, how much is the borough gonna put towards this truck? Whether it's the whole thing or not. Then we have to agree, what's the best process? Because if you're talking to me, $300,000 over five, 10 years, is a decision we can make over five to 10 years. And if we don't pay it today, we know that in three years, we can. Then I'd rather pay off it and, and maybe not save anything as far as the discount, but you could save in, in, in interest. Cause interest is the killer.
Yep.
Our problem is right now is we wanna pay, how do we pay? And, and, you know, it's kinda like being at home and your furnace goes out. If you weren't planning on it and you don't have a good saving policy at your house, or not even that, just you're just average person, it can catch you by surprise. And, and we're kinda caught by surprise. And I know that this has been talked for a while now. I'm not saying that.
Yeah, I know. You guys are true.
Right. Okay. We're starting to manage. No, but my point is, my point is, let's put a committee together. We can hash out a plan. Cause I think the, all of council, even the council sitting out there, the newly elected ones, we're on board on, on this. We just need to have a plan that we can work with, because-
So basically, basically leave the, leave it in the budget-
Yeah.
And then sit down and talk about how we go forward.
Yeah, cause I, I truly think the best way is to pay it off as soon as possible.
There's no doubt in my mind.
Interest, interest is the killer in any deal.
Jared, with the financing, what is the rate?
Uh, I mean, it, I have a quote from when we signed in, in August. It was 6%.
Six?
Yeah, but a little over six, 6.14 maybe. And there's only one, there's only one thing I'll bring up. And, and obviously we have no problem talking to you guys. When I was here in July, I believe Steve said something to the effect of, so you're asking for 300,000, you know, in perpetuity? And I said, yeah, and I'll be back in five years asking for more.
Right.
And he said, you know, just a word of caution, I think it was him, that, you know, council changes every so often. And so this will have to come up every so often. And I said, that's fine. I'll come in here every year and I'll present my case and, and that. My only concern about waiting, and I know that's not exactly what you're saying. My only concern about waiting till 29 is that some of you will not be up here. And some of you will not be up here. And so my concern is that I am trying to, to find some sort of, uh, security in that when this truck shows up in 2029, we're not saddled with the entire price of the truck.
Well, let me give you a security idea. The borough buys the truck. Now, we, we, we'll, we'll, we'll take on that payment to its pay.
But that's what I'm saying.
Now it's not gonna change, because we have, we, we created a bill.
That's what I'm saying. We just have to sit down with our finance team, our manager.
I like the idea of the committee approach.
Yeah, I, I think that's, that's a wonderful way to go. Jared's thought is, that's another thought though. I think you have a valid point. But if we bought the truck that we're, the borough is liable to make those payments in some manner till that truck pays off.
Well, they already signed the contract now.
We're gonna sign funding. You can pay for my house if you want to.
Well, wait, who's paying for my house then?
But yeah, instead of beating this bush tonight.
Yeah, no, and what I'm saying, what I'm saying is let's put this committee together. We'll figure out the best approach to pay off as soon as possible. And we'll just leave this line item in here. Don't expect that additional 300,000.
We may be, we may be able to get it.
We may be able to get a better rate.
Right.
Can we apply for LSA money for it?
Possible. You could, but just as well as you know, you know, if you apply this year, you won't get it till possibly next year. And you can't start paying on it until you get the money. And they're not gonna fund, they fund 50% of the grants, but it's not full. So you might get 300,000 or who knows?
Yeah.
If you get better than that. Thank you.
All right, thanks. All right. I think the general fund is beat to death, so.
Beat that puppy to the leg.
Yep.
It has no life left.
Stomped it some more. All right, so now we have the minor funds, which Fund 18, the capital fund.
So I have a question. Why do we put money in here? Why do we put money in here that we didn't receive?
What do you mean?
Sale of wastewater treatment plant, phase one.
Well, cause it's projected. It's the plan, the budget is the plan.
Tax income.
It's anticipated.
Tax income taken in.
Just like you'll see, yet again, we have the RACP phase one in the bond capital fund because
Well, that money's technically owed to us.
Right.
But a sale of property, as we've all have witnessed over the last six months to two years.
Three years.
Three years. Doesn't happen as fast as they say it's going to.
Right.
So why?
It's a projection to balance the expenditures that are planned.
Not, not in capital, it doesn't matter. First of all, you put it in here and you say it's, it's, it's a projection to the balance? Well, you shouldn't be buying anything if you have zero dollar in there. Right now, even though it's saying there's six hundred fifty for the sale of the wastewater treatment plant, there isn't. And this is where we get, this is what the mayor talked about earlier tonight, we're spending money before we have it.
Yep, that's, that's exactly what this sheet shows you.
Exactly. And if we took out that money that we rejected yet, maybe it makes it easier to swallow some of the projects we don't do or whatever. But of course, if I look in there right now and see the sale of McGinnis, I'm gonna say, well, hell, that's, I'll write your check sitting in, Jared. You know what I mean? That's, that's what I don't like about that. It's, it's misleading, and that's what gets us in trouble.
That's, that's typically what municipalities do when they're doing their capital budget. And for years, you know, you probably, you saw it in this past year, where there's things put in there in capital that didn't, that didn't happen. Okay?
I get that. But if we get a, uh, CB, say it.
CDBG.
CDBG grant for road work this year, and I say it's, I don't know, a million dollars. So we know this coming spring, we're gonna do that road. I can see putting a million dollars in there for income and a million dollars for expenses. But to project sales, I mean, for example, you have, you have McGinnis in here, there's a projected sale.
No.
I know.
Yes, you do.
I got, uh, McGinnis bios funding.
It's the bios.
Oh, it's the bios, okay. I'm sorry, I, I missed right there, oh, it was the revenue, that's why. But even that, why would you put that in there when the funding is strictly for McGinnis right now?
I was gonna say, we should lower that eight million because we're not gonna draw eight million into the budget. I get what you're saying, but it's, this is just, this isn't a ledger of what's in the capital, it's just that
It gives you a false reading.
It's not a ledger, it's a budget.
But if you lower it, then you're gonna have to take something out of your expenditures.
Mega Park's a perfect example, Mega Park, four hundred seventy eight came in, Mega Park, five hundred ninety seven went out. That's a capital expense. That was a project we did. I'm sure there's street projects in here we can download through. But we have other expenses on here that don't make sense. Cause we are assuming that we're gonna make those sales. And listening to, if we go the route of the, of the ECD, and it's a two-year plan to sell the property and develop it, I won't have to vote on that project. You see what I'm saying? So why are we putting stuff like that in here?
That sale, the sale of McGinnis is not in here.
I understand that, the bios, the sale of the firehouse that's been up for sale for two years that nobody seems to know about, is on here though. The sale of wastewater treatment that we can't get a crossing agreement for is, is, is on here. And what I'm saying is, projects that we know, received money for it, have a plan for it, they should go on here.
So
But if you would take, sell Firehouse out, that's two point five million, you're gonna have to take two point five million out of your expenditures then as well.
Do you have two point five million in capital?
I'm just saying, that's what it says.
I know.
If you take out of one to balance the other one.
That's exactly what I'm saying.
What you're basically gonna do, what you're talking about, is any project you have is gonna wait another year, at least.
So
Till you show it, till you show it as, as revenue.
It, here's the thing though, it, it's in the budget to plan, because if you take it out of, if we take this out of the plan, then what do you do if, if you make the sale, but you took the, the plan for the project out?
You have capital reserve.
But then
I mean, it would just transfer to the fund balance.
That's what I said, it stalls your project
It would transfer to the fund balance, but then
Why would it transfer, no, no, it wouldn't transfer to a fund balance, or the capital.
The capital fund balance.
Yeah, so it's just sitting there.
Which project are you talking about?
Me personally?
Yeah.
I didn't look at any project.
Okay.
I, I, I'm just saying, two years ago, we voted to sell the Firehouse.
It's three.
Three, but, okay, I mean, I just told you how bad it is. And, and one was
That's the same with the wastewater treatment.
You know, so you're looking at three years, it could be another three years. So we're budgeting, and this happened with McGinnis. We planned on having a bios grant signed and everything else, and all of a sudden, it didn't happen right away.
Took eighteen months to get the MPDES permit.
And, and payments were coming in, or, or bills were coming in, we were sweating it out there for a little bit. So that's why I don't like this concept. I'm sorry. Can I say, or I'd be a little cleaner?
Expenditures that are listed. Ridge Avenue construction costs, McGinnis development project, Columbia Crossing building repairs, three hundred block of Union Street, that's the CDBG project. Should that go into liquid fuels?
We already have part of that budget in the liquid fuels. So Derek's estimate was, uh, three hundred fifty thousand for construction costs. So we have two hundred thousand, I better double check, I think that's the number, in liquid fuels. Uh, this one, I'm sorry, so we have two hundred thousand here and a hundred fifty in liquid fuels for that project.
My ex-wife put two hundred thousand in here.
Oh, I know why we did, because that's the amount of the CDBG. And the CDBG goes into here and comes out of here, okay? Okay, ooh, good, okay, figured that out, it'll be in a minute.
But that's what I'm saying.
It's all late.
No, no, but that's what I'm saying, that, that shows money in, money out, it's already here.
So then we have a taser, parking software, Cody Cobra, in-car video server, IT infrastructures that desperately needs done. That's beyond its life, that's been put off for three years. Fuel management system, replacement server, which also needs done desperately, and then Ridge Avenue engineering costs. So what are we thinking?
I don't even know, it just doesn't make sense to me.
You're getting right back to what I told you the day and night, you tied projects to future purchases.
Right.
And there, it's all right there. Where you gotta get the money in and then decide what, what has your high priority.
And if we
I mean, we're
If we move the debt service from the general fund into here
I don't wanna do that. I agree with you, I agree with you on that.
Just watch that yearly, just watch it.
But Mayor, how do you budget for these items?
That's what I'm saying, you, it delays budgeting a year.
A year.
Or delays starting the project for at least a year.
Let, let's say, let's say you have
Or you don't start it.
So for, for Ridge Avenue construction, you have two and a half million dollars, okay? You have to sell the Firehouse for two and a half million dollars, okay? If that sale happens in July, even though it's not on here right now, we can vote and put it on. But that money, we know is there then. But to say we're gonna build Ridge Avenue with two point five million dollars, based on a sale that hasn't happened in the last three years, is where we get in trouble.
But you have to re-budget for these needs.
Yeah.
If you don't, you need to refund these expenditures that are listed here.
Okay, here's how you budget, for example, where do I see that? Hold on. Columbia Crossing buildings repairs, four hundred thousand dollars, okay? How do you budget four hundred thousand dollars? You say, I'm gonna have repair expenses coming up with that property that I owe, and therefore I'm gonna put fifty thousand a year away out of general into capital. And then whenever repair comes due, you have money there to pay for it.
Yep. But for that particular item, we were anticipating hearing by now, if we received the LSA grant and had the money.
Right.
So if we don't get the grant, then you, you know, the project doesn't get done.
Right, right.
Yeah. But this for us is a plan.
That's what, it's a plan to happen, yeah.
Right.
It's just a rough sketch.
That's right.
Now, this McGinnis Airport Development Project, we have three million projected, but most of that's gonna be paid this year. So that's inaccurate, like, we're not projecting to spend three million next year on the McGinnis.
No, and likewise, we're not expecting to get eight million dollar loan from there either.
Right. So that could be adjusted.
And I'm not saying we have to adjust them, I'm just saying
No, I think, I think we do, because, here's, here's the reason. Because you look, and as it is, with the over, with those over inflated revenues, it looks like we're putting six million dollars into a fund balance, but that is not accurate, because we're not going to get that eight million, because if we were gonna get eight million, we'd be spending eight million.
Right.
And we're not.
Right.
So, no, I agree.
So what number would you like in there?
For the fires?
Yes.
Only what we're spending.
Only what we're spending, yeah.
So
But you don't know exactly what that number is.
No.
Roughly
I would say five hundred.
Five hundred?
For next year, that's bled over into next year.
So if you're saying five hundred, just say a million.
Then say one million.
You know what I mean, and then
Yep, a million from buyers and a million on the development project line.
I mean, if you're comfortable with five hundred, then, then a million, we should go with that, but tonight.
I'm sorry, what was the second one?
The second line is eighteen four fifty O of two. So a million on there and a million on the buyers line.
My, my point was more like the mayor though, when it may not change this budget this year, before thinking, we need a plan. And I, and talking with the chief, you know, we really need to have a five-year plan, this is the, this is what we're gonna do. If we had a five-year plan, this Ridge Avenue thing wouldn't be an issue.
We, we have, we've been working at this project for a long time.
Only because the sale didn't happen yet. If the sale would've happened two years ago, then you'd have been like, we're behind, we're behind. All, all I'm saying is, ten years. Jake should be doing five years, we should be doing ten years.
We, with the, with the Ridge Avenue, just for realistic purposes, I mean, we got, we got this LSA million. We're selling the other portion of Ridge Avenue, which is not on the income revenue side, that's to go to public auction. I'm not, I don't think any of us are counting on the Firehouse being sold in time to fund any of that. But the RACP, the sale of the wastewater treatment plant, and the LSA grant, the LSA needs to be spent in a certain amount of time. And the RACP is deadlined as well. But between the RACP and the sale of the wastewater treatment plant and the other portion of Ridge Avenue, we'll basically have what we need to effectively move the public works facility from down there over to there, so that we can then sell the second half of the, of that property. Which is a, it's well worth that, that investment, because we can then move that, that other half of that property and get out of there. Those pieces are, have fallen into place. Now we're, I get what you're saying, if we don't get, you know, if the RACP monies don't come in, what if that takes another two years? I hope not. But then we'll have to push the project back.
Pete, you, what did you say? You, you have so much in grant money right now?
We have a million from the LSA for the Ridge Avenue property.
The chief and you know, five year day. You, you, you have to spend that, you have to use that. And you know you're gonna have things that you can do.
Here's the other thing
You can put the road into the place.
The RACP money needs a match, the LSA works for that.
Oh, okay, so you're gonna use that as a match.
We've, we've gotta strategically use that.
Wait, you can't, you can't match state funds with state funds.
How was it? What are we matching that with? Jake, do you remember? Or was that the, the money from?
It's coming from the bond capital.
The money from the sale of the Ridge Ave second half is the match for RACP. Yeah. So the LSA is, it's just free and clear, we have to spend that.
Free and clear.
Yeah.
They got LSA and used it. Put the road in, demolish that building.
Put up a pole barn.
Yep, spend as much of it as you have to spend. In other words, do as much of the project as you can with that money. And then when the other money comes in, continue on your construction. I think you can put the road in, demolish that building, and probably put a pole barn up there to hold your, your anti-skiders on.
The fencing needs reconfigured too.
Yes.
Once the road is
You, you gotta take it, what can you do with the money and, and say, okay, this is a priority, fencing, uh, the road, priority, okay, X amount, X amount, and you come up to that, you spend that money and get, get that part of it done.
Yeah, cause real answer, why don't we sell that property until the road fences up there?
Yeah.
No, we can sell it, it has a right of way.
Across
Yeah, but you don't have a road.
No, but the road is, if we wait till we build a road before we put it up for, for sale, then it's gonna be two years from now till it gets sold.
No, that's what I'm saying, put the road in now.
The right of, the right of way is there, we'll get the road in, I mean, Jake's, Jake's poised to put that in.
Put the road in, do the stuff you can, at a total of one million dollars, use it, get that part off on.
I'll, I'll say this, we're, uh, Derek can explain all this better than I can, I'm not doing it justice, but all of this is planned out, like, if we were this close to getting the whole project done, but then we just kick that all down the road and not do it, that would be a waste of the time that we've put into planning and, and everything up, up to this point.
I, I think, once you start, it's a commitment. We, once you lose that building down there, you have to do it.
Why don't you come join us on Wednesday, Mayor? We're having a discussion about this project. All right. Sorry about that. We'll try to keep you, I'll, I'll try to fill you in.
But no, use that money and do what you can. That's the way I feel. But I, I will tell you this, if we, if I would be at that meeting, I would be very adamant about, take what's up there right now and get rid of it. It's gonna cost as much, maybe more money than It's gonna cost as much, maybe more money to try to fix up that piece of junk up there. And you're gonna have a building sitting on a four-foot-high slab that probably needs concrete work. You're better off to destroy the whole thing and start new.
Nope. Because we, we, we tried that one up when we talked about building up at Blue Lane. That plan that they came up with was a $5 million build.
I think in, in, in the long run.
This is gonna cost us, we're trading property that we sold for it, but this is gonna cost us, like, in turn, if we take away all the grant money that's coming in, we're not taking any excess money out of capital that didn't come from other property that we sold for this project to be done and in the books. And if we don't follow through and do that, then we've wasted our time, we've wasted our money.
I'm not saying don't follow through, but I think you need to change the how you're gonna build it, what kind of building you're gonna put up there. You can put all the lipstick you want on that pig up there, but you're still gonna have to pay.
I don't know what else to say.
Any other thoughts on, we gotta move along here. It's like 10 of 10. We're all kinda, kinda tired. Eyes are itchy.
You've got 10 minutes.
I thought I'd drop my car off at SoCuts. Cause I gotta get back tomorrow. Anything else on capital? Any other thoughts? No. All right. Bond capital, Fund 30. This can be quick. I mean, we're basically just, we're still waiting on the money. We anticipate getting the money from phase one of the RACP. And that's the other thing. I know there were things that Derek said. We're still, we're gonna need, um.
We're working on it now.
Okay, are you? Yeah, I knew he had said there were things that he had asked speed for.
He has a staff member, uh, working directly with us.
Okay. Yeah.
But he, he does quite a list of things that are needed, documented.
For RACP?
Yes.
What we have on it?
No. Yeah, we thought we did too. Yeah, it's, it's kinda been a nightmare. Any questions on Fund 30? And liquid fuels. One thing I'll say about liquid fuels. Several years ago, we were told that to start spending, we hadn't been spending any of our liquid fuels money. It was being socked away and socked away and socked away. So we began using it, um, and rightly so, and that's where we pay our traffic lights out of there. Anything that we can pay out of liquid fuels, we have been. We're getting down to a point where we need to start making sure that, um, we're watching and we're not gonna deplete the fund. It, it's not a problem right now, but when we're thinking about five-year plan, we need to make sure in these five years, we're slowed down on that and we're not.
Heather, you don't show that on here though, do you?
No.
Show what?
In other words, I'm seeing 458,000, 459,000 coming out of fund balance.
Right.
Right.
But what I don't see is, okay, that's all well and good, but then what is the new fund balance?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, that's not generally on any budget, so.
I mean, if you're saying to me, okay, that's good, we have to use it down.
Yeah, we.
That, that's fine.
Yep.
I, I just. You start to get a little shaky when you start taking money out of your fund balance and you, and you don't know how much is still there.
Right. Yeah, and that's, I, I kinda, you know, I, I mean, at one time, we had like way much.
Oh, I know.
We weren't spending anything. I think everyone was afraid to spend because of the reporting, and now we're like, no, we're gonna. I know. Now we're like, no, we're spending. So I have a question. The street paving and ADA ramps, are we planning to do a bunch of paving projects ourselves next year or no?
Yeah, we're gonna just keep what, you know, what they have to do. I know this past year is just.
Well, you know, cause I was thinking, Jake, and, and I had mentioned this, I had mentioned this to Jack and, and Ron at one of our meetings. You know, with the fact that we have new people and, you know, we have some that aren't, that don't have a CDL yet, there's, you know, they're still relatively new. Is it, um, is it worth it for us to just say, you know what? There are things that we need to concentrate on that aren't necessarily the sexy paving and everything, but like, really take a look at our, at our street signs and get the ones that, that need replaced, replaced. Work on our curb painting or, or line painting that needs done. Our crosswalks, we're constantly being told, you know, we're not walker-friendly, we're, we're not, you know, pedestrian-friendly, we're not. So maybe it's, we concentrate on, you know, those kinds of things next year. Instead of planning for, you know, a bunch of paving projects.
I mean, that works. I mean.
Yeah.
The paving projects, you know, we're working on that stuff. That paints away wood. I call it the little stuff, curb paintings.
Right.
Paints away.
Right. And, and I get that. And that's why I said, you know, maybe with, with the new guys and, and, you know, it's just a way to, to get back into, you know, the flow there. I don't know.
But I, I, I wouldn't wanna give up on.
Right.
I mean, maybe we just, you know, that's.
Yep. Yeah.
Maybe like just figure, you know, maybe cut that number in half, just.
And when was, when was the last time we did the, we did one of those, um, street inventory things? You know, where they, where they go around and they grade each street and, you know, make sure we're.
Yeah, I think that was.
They were working at that this summer or not?
I thought so. It was recent.
Yeah, are we due for one of those?
Yeah, I think we're five years for that. So I think that was 21.
All right. Do you feel like your crew going into next year, I mean, I know you're at a better spot in terms of numbers, but you feel like you could be set to get a bunch of paving done?
I don't wanna sit here and say, well, it's paving done.
Hmm.
You know, this, like I said earlier, this year was just, it was just terrible for one of them to stay.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'd like to be able to catch up at least next year on what we missed this.
Yeah.
At this point in time, I would hope that's, I think that's realistic.
So Jake, when we do a street. Do we pay for it through liquid fuel? Do we, is that supplies or is that the whole project cost?
Uh, that comes out of the, um, street paving. If we get a project on the tour.
Yeah.
It's all out of.
Yeah.
So employee time and everything goes out?
Just materials.
Yeah, just materials.
But if, like the 800 block of Chusson Street, we paid somebody to do that. That came out of liquid fuels. We paid for their services, why don't we pay for our services?
Doesn't qualify for reimbursement.
Right.
Why not?
It's just the way that liquid fuels is.
I'm paying a person to do the street, whether.
But there are, there are, there are hirees. There are not outside companies.
It's a bid project, so everything's.
Everything's accomplished.
In order.
Yep.
I'll have to look that up.
Yeah.
I think, it's all been to this, those roads. I think for some of these municipalities, boroughs, whatever, they actually pay some staffing hours.
I mean, to me, it makes sense. If I wanna pay contractor A to pave your road and part of that expense is materials and manpower, then if we pave the road, you're still getting a paved road. It's actually gonna be cheaper probably. But you still gotta cover your costs and man-hours. Your, your materials and land, man-hours. So why, why is there a difference?
But what I'm talking, some municipalities will pay for it in 40, 50 years.
Oh, I'm not saying that. I'm saying that we should be able to estimate costs.
If you pay for more, 40, 50 years.
I'll ask.
There you go. Your honor.
I'll ask on the link.
Next, next year's budget. We'll have that fixed.
So under the street paving and ADA ramps, are we reducing that to 87.5?
Yep.
But then I think you'd wanna add the line painting and add that too, isn't it right? But Jake is actually getting some of that line painting accomplished this year.
Yeah.
So.
And I don't know that any, that the line painting can go in liquid fuels anyway. It can?
Yeah.
Oh.
So, so this is just a budget. Heather made the statement that she wants to reduce the amount of roads we do. Jake wants to at least finish what was supposed to be done this year. So just leave it the way it is. Okay?
And I just wanna know, because this has been on the budget every year that I have been sitting here, including before I, the year that I was elected, which was 2019, so for the 2020 budget. When is Jake going to get his lift truck?
I'll work tomorrow.
Jake's been very.
He has been trying to get that lift truck.
I'll work tomorrow. There's, there's been some reasons why I've been holding off.
Jake's always been the most gracious when it comes to budgets.
Well, I know. And I, and that's why I'm like, you know, it took, it took how many years to get the zero-turn lawnmower?
No, I was working on some stuff. Kinda looked at a different approach for a lighter chassis.
Okay.
We were going to go for a heavier chassis, but it's just like, let's stick with the same size that we have. The heights are the same. Just like the other day, that truck went down. And so, uh, so we got it fixed. Well, if I had the other one, that the height would be the same for two blocks. Plus, what you gotta remember is this truck will actually take over that 1992 Ford.
Okay.
Okay, so that thing's on its last leg.
Yeah.
So this year, this will have a line tank.
All right. Well, yeah, I know, I know. I've, I've, I've been advocating for you to get the truck. So, all right. Any other questions on liquid fuels? All right. Borough council comments. Anyone have any final comments? All right. Announcement the next meeting.
Wait, wait, I have a comment.
Okay.
I just wanted to congratulate the new council members, elected council members and mayor.
All right. Uh, announcement, the next meeting at 7:00 PM on Thursday, November 13th. Council will hold a regular meeting. And as an announcement, the office is closed Tuesday, November 11th. Could I have a motion to adjourn?
Sorry.
I have a motion by Councilperson Geely, second by Councilperson Hoffman, to adjourn at 10:04 PM. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed?
I said, oh.
We're adjourned.
There was no aye.